Hello, everyone, and happy Women's History Month. I'm Mary Bates, the Marketing and Communication Assistant. And today, I welcome you to our new series honoring the women of Temple Terrace. Today, we have our special guest, Ms. Jeannie Barlow. Hello.
Hello, Mary.
And Jeannie, our goal here today is just to get to know a little bit about you. And I just want to thank you for your time. I know you are a very busy woman. So yeah, are you ready to begin?
I'm ready. Let's do this.
So how long have you been with the city of Temple Terrace?
I've been with the city since 2010. So I'm going on 14 years this spring.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you tell me about what your role and responsibilities are here?
I am the Senior Executive Assistant to the City Manager. So I work directly for the City Manager and try and help him with the day-to-day operations of running the city. So whatever he needs help with, I'm there to assist. I also serve as a communication liaison between the City Manager and all of the Department Directors. I try and foster, you know, open communication, make sure he knows everything that's going on that's reported to me. I also oversee the agenda for the Council. So everything goes through this office before it goes to the Council. City Clerk's Office also assists with that. It primarily goes through the City Manager's office.
Okay, that sounds like a very busy job. What do you do in your off time to decompress?
I spend time with my kids. I like to work out. I like to read books. Just, you know, I'm very family oriented.
Awesome. What do you enjoy most about working with the city?
I really love the varied tasks. It's never the same thing. Every day is a different, something different comes up. I like working with the people. I think everybody here is, basically, we're on the same page, shooting for the same goal. So.
Yeah, I've noticed that too, just being here only a few short three months. Like, it's so like, it even feels like a family-oriented vibe. And I've only met nice people here.
Yeah, pretty much. Everybody's pretty nice.
Thankfully.
Thankfully.
What advice would you give to another woman who wanted to have like a position like yours?
I would say, the best advice I would give to someone is step outside of your comfort zone. Try new things. Set your sights on a goal and try and get there. Don't just do the routine stuff. Do something to make a difference.
I love that. How do you think your perspective as a woman specifically has impacted your work here with city government?
I think women generally foster collaboration better than men. So I think it's bringing departments together. I think you get more done when you have a team effort. And I think women are really good at working as a team. Not that men aren't, but I think that's a specialty.
Yeah, I think we're really good communicators, which is nice.
Also, I think empathy. Empathy plays a role too, because I think females tend to be a little bit more empathetic. So you can probably take a more unique approach to problem solving if you can have a little empathy.
Yeah, for sure. What do you think sets Temple Terrace apart from all the other cities that you've been to?
I think our mayor and council are very positive. I think they like to work as a unit. And there's not a lot of problems that they can't solve together. I think that they blend well. And I think that plays a part. It spills down to the rest of us. The City Manager is wonderful to work for. And I think it's just, it makes a difference when you have a positive outlook on things.
Right, yeah, we have really great leadership.
Yes.
Can you share an experience that you've had that has really made you really proud and you feel gratified?
Well, my latest effort, which again, it's a team effort. But it's getting the city to make historic preservation a public policy. So we're working towards becoming a certified local government. It's an effort that's been ongoing for 50 years. It's just never, we were never were able to get there. So finally, we've taken that step. We've adopted a historic preservation ordinance. We've created a historic preservation board. And now, we're working to become a certified local government. You submit the application now that everything is in place. And it's just, it's, I'm very proud of that.
Yeah, I think that's great, like especially because it's happening now. Like, we and you get to be a part of it.
Yes.
But this one's kind of a fun question. So if you could choose one word to describe yourself, what would it be?
Oh, my God. Probably dependable. I think dependable, I've always been dependable for my family, my husband. I've been dependable at work. I just, I try and make that effort to be that person that people can rely upon.
That's awesome. Knowing you so far, I can definitely agree with that. But yeah, thank you so much, Jeannie, for your time. And us as a community, we definitely honor all your efforts for the city.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure to be here.
Hello, everyone, and happy Women's History Month. I'm Mary Bates, the Marketing and Communication Assistant.
.................. So first, I'd like to remind everybody to turn off your cellphones. And I'd like to invite Councilmember Gil Schissler for the invocation and to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand and afterwards join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, bless us as we gather tonight to handle the business of our city. We thank you for the many, many blessings you bestow upon us each and every day and ask for your guidance on this council to do the next right thing. Guide us on the decisions we make, both large and small, that we will always do what is right and just. We ask for your grace on all of the employees of the city and for the protection of our first responders who serve and protect the citizens of our great city. We ask these blessings in the many different names that you are known, but in your most holy name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a packed house tonight. But for those of you who aren't aware, we've been doing historical facts in honor of our upcoming centennial. And this evening, the historic fact is going to be done by me. And in honor of Women's History Month, I wanted to share some information about women serving as elected officials on Temple Terrace City Government and compare it to state and national levels of women's participation in government. The first woman to serve on our local government, many of you may know, was Maude Fowler, who served as Vice Mayor. Meeting minutes aren't on the record until 1940. And for a while, they don't give first names of council members. So it's really hard to tell if other women served until 1974, when we have a very clear record of a woman serving on council. And that was Audrey Turner. She was first a city clerk and later became a council member in 1976, which was our country's bicentennial. And for the bicentennial, the city did a celebration, and she designed the flag. And I think this flag might be legendary or something, because everybody says, no one can find it. They'd love to see what it looked like, but there's, maybe she kept it, because she made it. In 1977, Nancy Seaver was a council member. And that was it until 1990. Since 1990, there was somebody, there is a female on council every single year, sometimes just one, sometimes two. Friend Bradford was a council member from 1990 to 1997. And she was also the first female mayor from 1998 to 2003. So to put the number of women serving in our local government in context, nationwide for cities with populations greater than 10,000, 32% of elected municipal officials are female. And that's current. And in Florida, that's 33.5%. So we may look like we have a 50-50 gender balance, but we actually have a mayor who is male. So we're actually about 40%, 60% here in Temple Terrace. So I'd like to thank City Clerk Cheryl Mooney for helping me pull some of this information for our interesting fact tonight. So that segues very well into our first proclamation, which is a proclamation in honor of Women's History Month. So I'd like to call Sergeant Tandra Mehlopolis to the podium. Have a little bit of information about her to share to begin with. This year's National Women's History Month celebrates women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination from our lives and institutions. This year, the city is recognizing a woman who is committed to embracing everyone and excluding no one, no one in our request for freedom and opportunity. This particular individual knows that people can change with help and guidance, and that young people in particular need to learn the value of hearing from different voices and different points of view as they grow and develop into adulthood. Sergeant Tandra Mehlopolis will be accepting the Women's History Month proclamation. With over 20 years of cumulative law enforcement experience, Sergeant Mehlopolis credits her mother's wisdom, guidance, support, and undying love as being the fundamental keys to all of her personal and professional accomplishments, as well as her inherent ability to overcome the various roadblocks and disappointments that she has encountered along the way. Sergeant Mehlopolis cites resilience as being the one word that encapsulates the essence of what she has developed over time and what it has taken to make it to this point in her career. Through it all, Sergeant Mehlopolis has policed with fairness, honesty, and compassion, utilizing her status as a sworn law enforcement officer to change the attitudes of our youth and community members about policing, while at the same time, working diligently to get her fellow officers to understand the importance of becoming more personally involved with our most challenged youth. By becoming fully engaged with our community, Sergeant Mehlopolis has taken the care and concern for the homeless, those suffering from mental health issues and safety, well-being, and personal development to our children to new heights of professionalism and service. Welcome, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. I also have a proclamation to read. They gave me a lot to read today. Make sure I have the right one. Whereas, the US Congress proclaimed the month of March as Women's History Month in 1987 and has proclaimed the observance each year since. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force. And whereas, for centuries, socioeconomic forces have challenged women's progress. However, despite these obstacles, America boasts a rich history of courageous women who defied the odds. And whereas, the city of Temple Terrace has been home to many dynamic and great women leaders, community servants, and entrepreneurs, and business professionals, educators, and more, who have made their influence felt and have constructed a path to ensure that the Temple Terrace community continues to thrive. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Abel, by virtue of authority vested in me as Vice Mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, designate March 2024 as Women's History Month. Do you have a few words to say?
Usually, this is not my setting. I do very well with kids, as everybody knows. So I am just very blessed and thankful to be able to have this moment, to be acknowledged for everything that I've done within the last seven, almost 17 years of my career here. It's just nice to be able to serve your purpose. So I realized my purpose a long time ago, so I was blessed with that. So I am very thankful and honored to be able to accept this.
Well, we're very grateful for you, so. All right, three, two, one. And one more for good luck. Thank you.
Can I get one more? Cellphone, mobile one. One, two, three. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation this evening is in honor of Bike Month. I'd like to invite Jan Resch, Chairperson of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and B-PAC members. Whoever's here from the B-PAC can also join her at the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice Mayor Abel, councilmembers. I'm joined by one of our other committee members tonight and want to thank you for issuing this proclamation and inviting us to be here. Many of us who serve on this committee do so because bicycling is important to us personally for either recreation or as a means of transportation. And as noted in the proclamation that you will be reading, there are a lot of good reasons to support bicycling in our city. But it's worth mentioning also that beyond the health and environmental benefits, some bike-friendly communities have also reported economic benefits that include positive impact on property values, on homes located in walkable bicycle areas. As one expert has put it, realtors sell not just houses, they sell communities. And communities that support and promote safe cycling offer a quality of life and lifestyle that's attractive to a lot of people. So as we celebrate Florida Bicycle Month, Bike Month, here in the city of Temple Terrace, our hope is that the community members will get out their bikes. We encourage them to take a ride with their kids to their favorite park, or maybe check out a few city parks they've never been to before. Take a ride to the library. Or with our centennial year approaching, perhaps explore some of our historic neighborhoods. And finally, we encourage residents to join Mayor Ross and many others for Bike with the Mayor on Friday, March 22nd, starting at 7:30 a.m. at the Rec Center. So on behalf of our committee, thank you again for issuing this proclamation, for highlighting the important role that bicycling plays in our city, and for supporting efforts to make Temple Terrace a more bike-friendly community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're very grateful for the work that the B-PAC has been doing. And I also have something to read you. Whereas, for more than a century, the bicycle has been a utilitarian, economical, environmentally sound, and effective means of personal transportation, recreation, and fitness. And whereas, the city of Temple Terrace encourages the use of bicycles as a means of transportation and recognizes bicyclists as legitimate roadway users. And whereas, the city of Temple Terrace encourages the increased use of bicycles, benefiting all citizens by improving the air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, decreasing the use of and dependence upon finite energy sources, and fostering exercise. And whereas, the city of Temple Terrace promotes safe and responsible bicycling and is committed to incorporating the development of bicycle facilities in the vision for revitalizing the city. And now, therefore, I, Meredith Abel, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Vice Mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Bike Month. Will you join me? All right, three, two, one. And one more. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes from previous meetings.
You have to approve. Second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. If anyone hasn't filled out a form yet, they're in the back. Council has agreed to a 30-minute time limit for public comment. If it goes beyond that 30 minutes, you still get to speak. It's just going to be at the end of the meeting, because there's people here who have to conduct business. But please be sure to know that we take your comments seriously and they will be followed up upon. The first person I have is Benny Harris.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for taking a few moments to hear me. Basically, my wife and I, we purchased a home in 2000. And at the time, we purchased a home, everything was existing. The previous homeowners, they did conduct some home improvements. They also added a separate detached garage. At the time that the garage was added, it was conforming. My wife and I, now, we want to consider doing some new improvements. And I want to expand the garage to the east, because I have 24 feet between the east property line and the existing garage. And so I know that rules have changed over time. The councilmembers, you know, if you make rule changes. And so now, my garage is non-conforming. And I would like to ask the city council to consider the rules that they have implemented regarding non-conforming structures. There is a way, when it comes to making home improvements, there is the best way, the most practical way, and probably, I would say, the best way to add on to your house, because you don't want it looking any kind of way. And I can understand the city making rule changes, because you want everything done in orderly fashion. You want things to look presentable and then look nice as well. And so at this point, for our time, as far as like with the home improvements, the garage expansion is on delay, because my garage is considered non-conforming. I would really like the city councilmembers to reconsider the rules that they have implemented, because if I attach the garage to the house, it would not be practical, and it would be more expensive. And on top of that, it would not really look right as far as like we're tying into the existing structure of the home and then making it basically a breezeway or walkway. It's really not convenient. It wouldn't look right as well. So I really like the city to reconsider the non-conforming structure rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The next person I have is Nicholas Amaya.
Good evening. Good evening. I am Nicholas Amaya, and this is my teammate Nicholas and my other teammate Adeline. And I live in Temple Terrace. My friends and I are on the Temple Terrace tennis team. We wanted to inform the city council about our recent successes. In the fall, eight of us played for the city of Temple Terrace in the Hillsborough County Division of the US Tennis Association Junior Team Tennis Program. We played against the local teams of Hunter's Green and the Tampa Bay Yacht and Country Club. We had a great season. Then, in December, four team members went on to represent the city of Temple Terrace at the US Tennis Association Junior Team State Tournament in Daytona Beach, in which teams from all around the state of Florida competed. We placed third out of five teams in our flight, and we played against teams from Miami, Tampa, Treasure Island, and Daytona. We played well and were proud to represent the city of Temple Terrace. We want to thank our great coach, Peter Adler, the tennis pro here at the Recreation Center, for training and preparing us for these competitions. Tennis is fun, and we are lucky to have a great coach. We would like to thank the Temple Terrace City leadership for providing the wonderful tennis facilities here and allowing the tennis program here to thrive. The city's tennis program is making a positive and lasting impact on kids and families. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your success. Representing the city well. The next person I have is Charles Loeb. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. My name is Charles Loeb. I live in Lineby Avenue, Lineby and Temple, in Tampa. I wanted to follow up on what I was talking about last time, because it's rather important. One figure I did not mention about the ratio from 80/10 to 10, to 50/25 to 25, like was in Miami when I was living there, is the difference in money. On a $2.5 billion project, like they were talking about, in Orlando, the work that was done was $2.3 billion. The money that had to come up in Miami would have been $625 million locally, within the three counties, and 625 million for the state. In an 80/10/10 ratio, you're talking about $250 million locally and $250 million from the state. They already do have one dedicated funding source, because they are pushing tolling. So that would be some money, too. Also, I was noticing in the New York Times and even in your ride guide over here, that Brightline is committed to coming over here. And it will take a little bit, but the sooner we get the money, and I don't want to see the community lose the opportunity to do this. I did go down to HART. I did talk to them about that. I found out the commissioners are on what is now called the TPO as opposed to the MPO. And I'm trying to get them pushing real hard, because there's a $375 million difference in money, both to the state and to the, both to the state and to locally. They also talked some local business to HART. You know, I've got to talk to Councilman Schissler about it after the meeting. He's agreed to do that. And one other thing that she mentioned to me, I felt was kind of interesting, and particularly justice to Councilman Chambers. And that is that they're going to have, that there's going to be a big National League of Cities meeting that's being hosted by Tampa come this November. And I was thinking about that, and I was thinking, I said, gee, you know, it's a great opportunity for you all. You could get, if you have a plan in mind for the centennial celebration, you might be able to get a lot of dignitaries from other cities. If you have something ready, put together, you have till November to do that. So I wish you luck in doing that. I hope you can get a lot of people here and have a great centennial year. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. And that's all I have for items that are not on the agenda. Oh, you have one, too? Yes, sir.
I'm Dave Backer, 11721, Primrose Lane, Temple Terrace, 33637.
Is this on the agenda?
No. I was going to talk about the Bike Month.
Sorry, go ahead.
We have a new bike path along Morris Bridge Road from IHOP going all the way around up to 127th. Nobody wants to take care of it. Nobody really wants to, it's apparently in no man's land. Apparently, it's in a right-of-way, it's DOT. Since it's Bike Month, why not let the city of Temple Terrace annex it and get it into the city? And it's a beautiful bike path, it's fun to ride, and being it's Bike Month, you know, look at it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Backer. Oh, yes, please.
Ellen Snelling, and I'll fill out my form later, but I just wanted to give an update. I talked at a meeting maybe a month ago about Delta 8 THC and a bill that's been going through. So first, I just wanted to show, I have to show and tell something. But this is one of the posters that we have that has products on it that we use like in the schools to teach parents and students about some of these products, because we find that many are just not aware of it, especially the parents. And so I'm part of the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance, and we are glad to go out and educate anyone who's interested. And we have a lot of resources online at hcda.com. So these products are ranging, we have the Skittles, which is 250 milligrams of THC. And these are regular Skittles, which you can see, they look almost exactly the same. So it'd be really hard for any child or person to tell the difference. And then we have Flying Monkey, 150 milligrams, THCO, 850 milligrams in a package. And then Tiddles, 500 milligrams in a package. And all of these I purchased in Temple Terrace. And they are legal right now. So the bill that is going through right now is SB 1698. And SB 1698 went through every single Senate committee and actually passed unanimously. It was almost unheard of, like so Democrats, Republicans, all agreed that it should pass. And it was 2 milligrams THC per serving and 10 milligrams THC per package of Delta 9 THC, which is the THC found in marijuana. All of these synthetics are illegal in this bill. So that means THC, Delta 8, THCP, all those different synthetics would be illegal. So in the House, went through every single committee today. An amendment was added, so they're increasing the serving size to 5 milligrams per serving and 50 milligrams per package in order to get enough votes to pass it. But it's still a very good bill. And many of these products, they basically, after October 1st, will no longer be legal. And it will really protect our children. So I just wanted to. So I just wanted to again, thank you all for your support over this time, and we're hoping by the end of the week that the bill will be passed completely. Thank you.
Thank you for the update, Ms. Snelling. And just so everybody knows, we're so happy to have everybody here, but if your item has passed, you don't have to stay all night if you don't want to. It's not rude to get up and leave if you want to. Our next item is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
To approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. The first is first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance vacating the 15-feet drainage easement on the rear of the property located at 6725 Drifting Sands Road. First, I'll open the public hearing, and Utilities Director Troy Tench will explain.
Good evening, Your Honorable Vice Mayor, City Council. So I'm before you this evening to request the vacation of a 15-foot drainage easement that's located along the rear lot line of 6725 Drifting Sands Road. This, if I could have the figure pulled up, please. Thank you. So the area I'm speaking of is that there's a red dotted line, and beyond that point, you'll see a solid black line. So the easement actually is located within that area. That's the 15 feet that they're asking to, the property owners asking to vacate or release, if you would. And so city staff looked at this. We feel that it meets with other requests that have taken place within the same area. In addition, we do not believe that vacating this easement, this strange easement, represents any detrimental issues related to either the city or the surrounding community or neighbors in this case. In addition, the, this is related to an eventual sale of 25 feet of additional property that's also located on that survey, as you can see. The additional property was initially agreed upon by city staff back in the late 90s. They identified this specific neighborhood along Drifting Sands and said that the neighbors were eligible to purchase an additional 25 feet of property behind our homes, which was basically 25 feet of the old railroad grade right-of-way within that area that the city had purchased back in the early 70s. So this is kind of the first step in the process. He's looking to vacate this easement. And what this will allow him to do is to utilize that parcel of land really kind of unencumbered. There won't be the regulations you would typically see regarding vacation, regarding placement of items within easement area. So this is kind of the predecessor as it goes through to the eventual sale of the property that's located behind him. So with that, staff recommends city council adopt this ordinance in first reading and schedule the second reading and public hearing for March 19th, 2024. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tench. First, I'll open it up to a public comment. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, council questions. Councilmember Fernandez.
Well, I have a question for you. So the easement is a drainage easement?
Correct.
So my question really has to do with how does that impact the water, either flow or retention or drainage from that property and other properties?
So the original drainage easement was established to allow flow along the backside of all those properties really south. There's a stormwater pond located about midway of Drifting Sands. So it was allowing for water flow to either go towards that stormwater pond or go towards the stormwater pond that's actually located there at the intersection of White Way and North River Hills, if you've seen that larger pond. But we made a determination that over time, the swale has kind of flattened out. So there's just a natural gradual flow over the property, and there's not any kind of defined ditch within that area. So we believe that allowing that vacation or allowing this vacation is warranted and would not be detrimental, again, to the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, so then, so where before there was a defined swale that actually did have a drainage purpose, the land has evened out, so it wouldn't be an issue because I could imagine that if I had this property, I would want to fill the swale if it was a swale or even it out or level it in some way. So as long as that, I mean, I don't have an issue with this, but just as long as that doesn't have a detriment to water retention in the area and maybe encouraging any, some kind of flooding or something, I don't know.
Absolutely. So a little bit of background, too, about that area. The soils are very sandy, so there's a lot of percolation. So there's not a lot of actual flow even during heavy rain events, but when there is flow, there's adequate space left outside of the existing easement for that flow to travel to the corresponding stormwater ponds.
Councilmember Schissler?
Yeah, how many other adjoining properties are impacted by the same easement?
So the property located directly to the north has already purchased the additional property, so that easement is now gone. The property to the south, the easement actually ends right behind this property that is requesting it, 6725. The property directly to the south of them is the one that's on the corner there of Drifting Sands and North River Hills. So there, right behind them is the stormwater pond. So there's a drainage easement over the pond itself, but as far as the easement that traversed along the back of the property, this is the last property to the south.
The others would all have been vacated earlier, previously. Okay, thank you.
So I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, vacating the 15-foot drainage easement along the southernly line of Lot 13, Block 1 of Andrews Subdivision, as recorded in Plan Book 49, Page 3 of the official records of the Hillsborough County, Florida, establishing conditions precedent to vacation, directing for the recreation of this ordinance in the official records of Hillsborough County, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with and providing an effective date.
If the ordinance is acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance vacating the 15-foot drainage easement on the rear of the property located at 6725 Drifting Sands Road.
To approve on first reading, ordinance vacating the 15-foot drainage easement on the rear of the property located at 6725 Drifting Sands Road, with a second public hearing scheduled for March 19th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, I'm sorry. I forgot to ask if the council had any comments.
None.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thanks for your patience. All right, next item is first public hearing. This is continued from February 6, 2024, and first reading of an ordinance partially vacating Hyacinth Drive. I'm not going to open it because it's still open from last time. City Engineer Brian McCarthy will explain.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and City Council. Brian McCarthy, City Engineer, and I'm here tonight to present a request to vacate the public right-of-way along Hyacinth Avenue. Just to give a little bit of timeline, background behind this petition to vacate. So in 2016, the petition came from Annette Andronimo Alvenaneda, requesting to vacate Hyacinth Avenue. Also, in 2016, city staff had an opportunity to review the petition. However, they decided to hold off on bringing it to city council at the time because there was a FDOT project in design along Morris Bridge Road for a safety improvement project. In '22, FDOT completes their safety project, and the petitioner asks us to continue with the petition. And so here in '24, we're bringing this item back to city council. And so what we did was we kind of reviewed this petition based upon the city code 12-330, which deals with the vacation of public and private streets or right-of-ways. And there's a few items that I bolded and underlined, such as the street is currently unneeded for any existing or future vehicular, bicycle, pedestrian access. It's also unimproved. It's currently just a pervious surface, grass area. The area is also significantly changed since when it was originally dedicated back in the 1920s. And then lastly, the location in terms of utilities and drainage patterns will not be adversely affected by this vacation because the city is recommending a utility easement over the public right-of-way. So just, this is the 1920s plat, kind of shaded in red, is where the request to vacate is. It's between Blocks 7 and 10, Hyacinth Drive. And in the second figure is kind of what the current situation looks like with the original vacate request, which was just behind the property belonging to the applicant along So during our review process here in '23 and '24, we decided to extend the vacate request further east towards Morris Bridge Road, and I'll show another figure, kind of highlighting that area. And then we're also following the 2016 recommendation based upon the existing utilities that they identified that we would continue with the proposing a utility easement over the vacated area. And so going back to our figure, kind of highlighted in yellow, which is the small section behind 8611 Oleander Drive, is a small section. And from a maintenance standpoint, we decided that it wasn't necessary for the city to continue to maintain this small area. So we decided to incorporate into this vacate request. This is a picture of the site standing on the eastern side from Morris Bridge Road looking west. And this is on the western side looking east from Primrose Avenue, Primrose Lane. So some of the questions that we received during our, I guess, since we opened up the public hearing, one of the first question was about if this vacate was approved, would the space become a parcel or would the adjacent property owners receive any additional acreage? Unfortunately, staff isn't qualified to answer this question. This is something that should be determined by a land attorney or a title attorney that would determine what would happen. The second question was about if this vacate was approved, could a property owner split the lot and build additional homes? So both properties would obtain additional acreage. However, it would kind of be dependent upon how the property owner decided to lay out the buildings, so to speak. If they wanted to increase the amount of homes, it would more than likely need to go through some type of rezoning application or through some type of building permit process to allow that further use of the properties. And the last question was, can a restriction or condition be added to the deeds that would prevent any future lot splits? We've seen deed restrictions as it relates to stormwater and utility facilities, but in terms of, excuse me, property owners are typically compensated for those types of deed restrictions. So at this time, with respect to a lot split restriction, it's not a recommended action. So kind of just to recap, the area that we're requesting to vacate along Hyacinth Drive is that section highlighted in red. Staff has reviewed the petition and found it consistent with the city code. Unfortunately, today, the applicant wasn't able to attend tonight's city council meeting. So they provided us with a written statement this morning, and we provided it to the city clerk who printed out copies of her written statement to the council members here. And with that, I stand for any available questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. First, I'll open it up for public comment. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
Can you put that one picture back up of the plot? Dave Becker, 11721 Primrose, Temple Terrace, Florida, 33637. That one right there, that would be good. The first of my request is, again, I've been up here and I've lived in this neighborhood about 36 years. Little bit of history, I'm one also to walk the petition around to get this area annexed. And there's a lot of controversy about that, but we were annexed and very happy to get the water and sewer, and we're happy to be in Temple Terrace. First thing I'm asking is that you deny the petition. Leave it as it is. She's already taken care of. The property owner's already being maintained. City doesn't do anything with the property. And just deny it and let it be. What we're concerned about, let me get my real notes, is what she could, the land owner could basically, this is a 50-foot by 200-foot roughly easement that the city's going to vacate. She could, the property owner could eventually replot the property. 70-foot lot, I think, is a minimum-sized lot in Temple Terrace. Or, you know, again, replot it and then, you know, possibly increase the density of the neighborhood by building a house or whatever on the property. The area, just seeing the density just explode with all the new apartments up around 127th and Telecom Drive. We don't believe that the city should just give the property away either. It should be sold. And really, there cannot be any restrictions put on as far as, you know, what can happen to the property once it's been deeded over to her. It's her property, and she can, you know, replot it and make a buildable lot out of it. If the city's going to give it away, and again, probably not going to like, neighbor's going to say about this, where I'm, what I'm saying is donate it to an organization, to a veterans organization. Build a tiny house on there for a disabled veteran. You know, we've already increased the density. And again, the writing's on the wall. It's going to get plotted back over to her, and then she's going to increase the density of the neighborhood. And so we're saying, you know, the city's done it before, given property to organizations. Let's give it to a veterans organization, build a tiny home on it, because it's going to happen. Anyway, that's, those are basically objections. Again, I don't have a lot of support from the neighbors, but everybody's busy these days. But I would feel that really that property should just be left as is. And, you know, the writing's on the wall. It will probably eventually down the road, and if not this land owner, it wouldn't possibly be the next land owner. You know, see that they have available property, 70-foot lot or a 50-foot lot, whatever the city, because there is already a 50-foot lot, you know, in the neighborhood that was built on. So I'm up. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
I have a point of order. Mr. Shawn, do we need to renew the ex parte comments at this, since it's a public hearing and there's been a delay or has been the continuous? Do we need to reestablish that?
I don't have that this is down here as a quasi-judicial hearing.
Okay, all right, okay.
So no.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Did anyone else want to speak, public comment? Okay, then I'll pass it over to council to see if you have questions. Councilmember Schissler.
The safety project, is that the, is that the trail that we were talking about earlier?
Yes.
Is that, is that, is just, I know it's not really, is that city property? Is that city property or is that county?
It is DOT property.
DOT property, okay. All right. Second, with, can you go back to the current plot, where, there, okay. Just to the, what would that be? Just to the south of Primrose Lane, the red area, that little triangle. Is that a no man's land or is that just, is that all part of Primrose Lane property? That little, that little pie shape?
Oh, I understand what you're saying. So the one that's unaddressed?
Yes.
That's south of the Hyacinth Drive vacate area?
Yes.
So that is a parcel, and that property is currently owned by the petitioner? So it's owned by the property owner to the north?
Technically, don't they own the red area also?
No, because it's, it's considered a public right-of-way.
Public right-of-way, okay. All right, okay.
Not exactly. A right-of-way is we have exactly what it says. We have a right-of-way to construct Hyacinth Drive. However, it is very possible, depending on what dedications existed and how the land was conveyed and how the area was created, it is very possible that the abutting property owners already own the underlying fee. So it may already belong to them. We just have a right to use the area for a road. Within this ordinance, even though we are vacating the right-of-way, we are retaining an easement, a utility easement. an easement, a utility easement there. So therefore, and the area described as the utility easement area is pretty much the right-of-way itself. And by retaining the easement for utilities, nobody should be building anything on top of it because it reserves an access to that area. There's an access over it, through it, and underneath it. If somebody builds on top of it, it could be subject to being removed at their expense. So I don't know, depending on how they would fit something there, I don't know whether that would prevent them, it would possibly prevent them from building another house there.
Okay, well, to that point then, you, the slide, earlier slide you were talking about subdividing, go back a couple. All right, I don't remember which one it was now. We were talking specifically about having land attorneys come in and decide whether it could be parceled out or whatever. What's your, what is our legal department's opinion on that issue?
I have not examined the early original records for that property, so I cannot give you an opinion as a title person or a land attorney on this. I have not examined all of the documents pertaining to this piece of property since its creation and dedication with regard to having the right-of-way for the road. But the city, the city does not own that property. We only have a right-of-way at this time, and it seems to be only for the purpose of putting in the road. So it's like we have rights-of-way in front of many houses here to put sidewalks in and to build roads, but oftentimes, the underlying fee to the middle of the road is owned by the people who have houses on either side.
So do you concur with, when you say staff recommends doing it, does that include legal department's recommendation or is that just your staff?
That was just staff. I did not give an opinion. They determined whether we have a use for that, and apparently, staff has determined that the city does not have a use for that property. We do not intend, obviously, to ever build Hyacinth Drive running through there.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
That's all?
I'm good.
Questions?
I do.
Could you go back to the slide where there's the two colors, with the yellow in there? Okay, who owns the property at 8611?
A gentleman that was here earlier, but he has left since then.
Okay, so that, since you're going to vacate that part, the yellow part, he's requested that or?
That would be part of the title attorney portion of it, where, again, as our city attorney had mentioned, where it's decided where half of the vacate goes to the northern properties and half of it goes to the southern properties, then 8611 would essentially gain that northern portion of it.
Okay, and if we could go back to that slide again, please? On the 11705 property, it shows two gray areas. I assume those are structures?
Yes, I would believe that they're buildings. I know for sure, at least the northernmost one, I'm not sure about the southernmost one, when they did these like satellite building aerials.
Okay, so that's not another house, that's?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So when you, city attorney, noted that it's possible that the property owner actually owns the land beneath the right-of-way, how would we know that?
We would have to, we would have to probably have a title search done to determine who is the owner, and that would go back as far as the beginning of the dedication. So having a title search done would be the best way to discover who owned it.
Okay, so when I look at the original plating, clearly Morris Bridge Road was not in that plating because obviously it's expected to be laid out differently. So that's one of the significant changes that has happened since this property was platted. And I see that it would, it would make sense that we would not need a road there. So right now, if you look at 8611 Oleander Drive, so they, they actually come in off of Oleander Drive to access their property, correct?
Yes.
Nobody at this moment comes in off of Morris Bridge Road to access these properties.
That's correct.
And the expectation is then that, at this moment, 8611 Oleander Drive, their, their property essentially ends at this line where, lack of a better description, the, the yellow hashtags start, okay. And with 11705 Primrose Lane, they own the property that's above the red line, and, and they own the property below the red line, south of that. We don't necessarily know who owns the property that's, that we're discussing vacating. So, I mean, I, I think I would like to know that because I would, I would like to know if we're, if it's a property that, if, if it's land that the city actually does own before we?
No, we, we know we don't own it.
Okay, so somebody?
We know we don't own it, so all we have is a right to use it.
Okay, that, well, that was one of my questions then. So if we were to, to give up the right to use this property as a street, how, aside from the potential of, of a future possibility of maybe subdividing it, how else would that affect the current properties nearby? They don't, they don't access anything through that space, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the main concern that we've heard expressed is the possibility that just adding this usable space could, in the future, end up making this lot buildable for two separate properties? Is that, that's the concern, that's the only concern we've heard, right?
That's my understanding of the concern, yes. However, there is, if we propose, if we move forward with our proposed utility easement, the applicant, a future applicant would need to return in order to build on top of that utility easement. They would have to vacate then the utility easement in order to build.
Okay.
That's it. Good? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the partial vacation, closure, discontinuance, and abandonment of Hyacinth Drive, located north of Temple Terrace Highway, south of Oleander Drive, east of Primrose Avenue, and west of Davis Road, with the Primrose Gardens plat, in the City of Temple Terrace, Hillsborough County, Florida, subject to the reservation of a non-exclusive public utility easement, providing for conditions of vacation, providing for recordation, providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing ineffective date. If the ordinance is acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance partially vacating Hyacinth Drive.
To approve on first reading of the ordinance partially vacating the Hyacinth Drive, Hyacinth Drive, when would be the second reading?
March 19th.
March, okay, March 19th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. If approved, this ordinance will appear for second reading on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. The next item on the agenda is first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance annexing approximately 4.18 acres from unincorporated Hillsborough County to the City of Temple Terrace. I'll open the public hearing, and city planner Miranda Anaya will explain. Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, and good evening, Castle. Okay, yes, as you mentioned, this is the first reading, first public hearing of, of the annexation, ANX 2301 for 10024 Davis Road. This is one of three land use actions for tonight submitted by the applicant. The first will be the annexation, the second will be the comprehensive plan amendment, and last would be the rezoning amendment. This is an aerial map of the surrounding area. To the north, south, and the east is single-family residences, and Temple Terrace owns the parcel to the west. The applicant is requesting to annex 4.1 acres. There is an existing mobile home on the subject property, and the applicant would like to demolish the home and place 32 single-family homes on the 4.18 acres. The property has an existing future land use of RES 6, which is in Hillsborough County, and it has an existing land use of ASC 1, which is agricultural, single-family conventional. The property is located in the Temple Terrace Utility Service area, and the owner also owns the property to the north, which will be discussed in the later applications. Florida statute requires properties to be annexed to meet certain criteria. The applicant has demonstrated that they will meet the criteria, and staff has reviewed that as well. There is a comprehensive plan policy to support this annexation. It reads, "Continue to process voluntary annexations for non-residential and residential properties at the request of the property owner." We have received no objections from Hillsborough County. The planning commission staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval. Also, the development review committee has no objections to this proposal. Staff finds positive findings, and we recommend city council approve the first reading and first public hearing of this ordinance. And we would like to schedule the second hearing and reading for March 19th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Anaya. So I'd like to ask, is there any public comment on this item? Yes, sir? I'm sorry, please approach.
Get your name and your city.
Jeff Howser, Temple Terrace, I live at 8655 Navajo Avenue, which is the, the neighborhood north of the property that we're speaking about. We have a few issues with a couple of the things she's going to speak about today. Our biggest question, we don't really have a problem with the property being annexed into Temple Terrace. Our concerns are more about if this property is annexed to Temple Terrace, is there going to be any adjustments to the road, which is Davis Road, which is now Hillsborough County-owned? We've lived there for many years, and this road is deteriorating. Hillsborough County doesn't want to seem to do anything about it, so we're asking Temple Terrace, if we're going to keep annexing properties into Temple Terrace, that we move to annex Davis Road into Temple Terrace as well, so that we can take care of the road that all these homes are, are having to be used for.
Thank you, Mr. Howser. Good evening. Please state your name and city of residence.
Kevin Riale, West Sterns River Miller for the applicant, office at 401 East Jackson Street. This application that we're talking on now is just for the annexation, and I just briefly want to say that we concur with staff. The, the main concerns with an annexation are it being compact and contiguous and not creating any enclaves, and this is a rectangle that borders the property on two sides, so, you know, we believe that it meets all the state criteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you, the applicant does have time for rebuttal, so we want to make sure that everybody who is here to, for just general public comment, that they come up first, and then you have a chance to come up again to respond to whatever they say if you're representing the applicant.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I, we're going to be hearing the three items, and I don't, I don't think I'll have anything else to say on the annexation itself. Thank you.
Okay. So we have anybody else who's here for public comment on the annexation ordinance only?
Hello, I'm Ralph Giordano. I live at 8716 West Landway Drive, which is one of the cul-de-sacs that is directly across the street from these properties. It's, it's got several reasons not to come into Temple Terrace. You don't want that property. It's just that simple, because that road is a disaster. There are already multiple problems out on Davis Road. And another development, and I don't really care whose name it's under, you know, whether it's under the city or whether it's county, county's already washed their hands of it. They seem to just hand it over like it's nothing. So, okay, so be it. That doesn't really bother me. What bothers me is when we get to the zoning phase, and I know I'm out of sync with this, but they want to put R9. How big are the lots in an R9 community? Does anyone know? Anyone? You're in real estate, don't you know?
I'm not in real estate.
Well, you know what I mean, you're the lawyer person.
The best person to ask is our city staff person, who's sitting right here.
Okay, city staff person, how big are we talking about these lots?
Sir, please finish your, your comments and?
Okay, so my comments are that I think that this property will be incompatible with the area, and if the city steps in, they're going to have a lot of trouble with the rest of the residents in the area wanting upgrades, because we've already been hit by Amazon. We've already got huge trucks coming up and down. We've got all the traffic from Amazon, and then we've got a new development along Temple Terrace Highway with R9, where the houses are huge and 10 feet apart, five feet on this side of the line, five feet on that side of the line. That's just too much for Davis Road. As it is, all of those people come to Davis Road to get down to the interstate to do business. Our little road is literally falling apart from under our vehicles. We've got trucks, we've got buses, and the amount of traffic is unbelievable. I can't even get out of my street on some occasions. So I would like some consideration here for the city to give this some really good thought if you want to deal with the traffic nightmare that will happen.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak on the annexation of the 4.18 acres? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to, that would be rebuttal, right? Or staff?
If, if the applicant does want to come up again, he can. If he doesn't want to speak again on this, he doesn't have to.
Sir, would you like to address any of the comments?
Again, for the record, Kevin Riale, I'm not going to add anything to the record just to point out that the annexation is, that the state statute is focused on the, the shape and continuity of the, of the property, not, not necessarily the road that is adjacent to. Thank you.
The road that's ridiculously?
Councilmembers?
I just want to clarify that?
Sorry, just a second. I can't hear you.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I need to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, questions? Councilmember Schisler?
Just wanted to verify, this is to the west of Davis?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Where is he? Yes, okay. That's all I had, was to verify, I wanted to verify that.
Councilmembers?
Well, I just, when an annexation comes in front of us with regard to accepting it or not accepting it, isn't our requirement to follow the state statutes and the criteria that is laid out for us as a, as a decision whether to annex the property or not annex the property?
The state statute, there is one on annexation. It, it provides all of the conditions and requirements for a voluntary annexation. And staff here, it's up to you to make the finding, it's part of the ordinance that the criteria has been met for annexation. Now, you're not required to annex something into the city. The council has the right to decide whether they want to make the city larger or not make the city larger, but staff has indicated that the criteria under statute has been met for this voluntary annexation.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk then to read the title of the ordinance. Okay, I'll ask the clerk then to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of one parcel of certain real property located south of East Fowler Avenue and west of Davis Road, addressed as 10024 Davis Road in total in 4.18 plus-minus acres lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County. Legally described in Exhibit A attached here to, directing that this ordinance be recorded with the clerk of the Circuit Court of Hillsborough County. Directing that the corporate boundaries of the city be redefined to include the annexed area, providing for severability, providing for correction of typographical errors, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date.
If the ordinance is acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance approving annexing approximately 4.18 acres from unincorporated Hillsborough County to the City of Temple Terrace.
Move to approve on first public hearing, first public hearing and public reading ordinance annexing approximately 4.18 acres into the City of Temple Terrace with a second hearing and reading scheduled for March 19, 2024.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
My comment is that, as this is just for the annexation, there'll be plenty of opportunities to discuss the impact to the city and to the locale for any changes that would be made. So I made the motion. I'm in favor of the annexation.
That's my comment.
I have some comments, and I'm going to pick on you for a little bit, Councilmember Schisler, because you made the motion. But, so, why is it that you feel you'd like to annex this property?
Well, we have no reason, A to two, to. It's not like we went out to specifically annex this piece of property. It was a voluntary annexation by the petitioner, by the owner. And it'll help to smooth out the city boundaries, that's one issue. Okay? It'll get rid of some of this cookie-cutter stuff that we have going on our boundary. And we just, I see no reason not to. I see no reason not to.
So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays, the motion carries. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, March 19, 2024. The next item on the agenda is first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance adopting a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment for Folio 037534-0000 and addressed as 10024 Davis Road. I'll open the public hearing. City Planner Miranda Anaya will explain.
Hey, there again. Yes, this is the first reading and first public hearing for the comprehensive plan amendment for 10024 Davis Road. This is the second land use action by the applicant tonight. The proposed property is currently, has a land use district of Res 6 in Hillsborough County. And they've proposed to go to R9 in Temple Terrace. And here's an aerial map of the subject property. It's the same property that was in the previous land use action for the annexation. Property is approximately 4.18 acres. There's a, currently a mobile home, a carport, and a metal barn located on the property. As far as concurrency goes, like I stated, this property is located in the Temple Terrace Utility Service area. We have confirmed with utilities that there is capacity, and they'll be required to connect to central water and sewer. We also confirmed with Public Works that there is capacity and availability for solid waste. The applicant didn't address stormwater, but it is depicted on their master plan. This photo is the future land use map of the surrounding area. You can see here that it's Res 6. And this is what it would look like if it goes to R9. This chart here depicts the difference between the R6 and R9 standards. They're familiar in the range of allowable uses. The non-residential development is the same as far as four-area ratio. And it is an increase in the density. R6 stands for six units per acre, and R9 is nine units per acre. This slide shows the depiction and description of the comprehensive plan. It generally states that R, I won't read the whole thing, but it generally states that R9 is for maybe neighborhood commercial, but it's primarily used for a single-family, attached and detached. And this is the future land use map of just Temple Terrace. You can see on this map, I did hear the concerns about the neighbors. But if you did look at the map, you can see that in this general area where the subject property is, it is zoned R9 to the north, to the west, and in the other areas that are in the jurisdiction of Temple Terrace. Okay, I did also, on this slide, it also shows comprehensive plan amendments that are consistent with this application. I won't read everything, I just want to read a couple. Objective 2.1 states, "Continue to maintain adequate land designated for residential uses, including multifamily and mixed-use residential, which can accommodate the projected population and provide safe, decent, sanitary, and affordable housing opportunities for the current and future citizens of Temple Terrace, and provide opportunities for the private sector to provide 7,435 new dwelling units of various types, sizes, and costs by 2040 to meet projected growth in the number of city households, and include housing opportunities for affordable, low- and moderate-income households." The planning commission did provide more policies as well as the applicant, and that should be in the packet agenda. Relating to the strategic plan, we do have a goal and objective, Goal 9, Objective 9E, expand and improve affordable housing options throughout the city by improving the quality of existing housing stock to support neighborhood stability through owner occupancy. The state, Florida Commerce, which was previously Department of Economic Opportunity, does not have to review this application because it's less than 50 acres in size. Public comments have been received and should be included in your packet. On December 11, the Hillsborough County City/County Planning Commission held a public hearing for this application and recommended approval. And staff finds the application consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we are recommending approval and would like to schedule a second hearing and reading for the ordinance for CPI 2302 for March 19, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Anaya. I'd like to open it up for public comment. I already have one request from Mr. Hauser. And this is specifically on the comprehensive plan and future land use map amendment.
I'm going to have her bring the map up for me real quick.
Yes, sir.
This one or the one with Hillsborough as well?
That one's fine. I can use that one.
That's proposed, here is existing.
Okay.
Can you just?
Again, my name is Jeff Hauser. I didn't mention the first time that I am the president of Taj Terrace HOA, which is representing a lot of the people here today. One thing I'd like to point out is that Ms. Anaya said that a lot of the development properties around here is already R9. That is false. If you look, our neighborhood is zoned R7, which is Navajo to the north. Can you guys see that on your, on the west side of Davis, on Navajo? That is all, that is R7. The property, which is another property that I believe they're going to be, that if they purchase as well, is the property to the north. So that's between our neighborhood and the one that is highlighted there, is already zoned R7 currently, according to Hillsborough County. All the properties to the east over here on Navajo, Elmdale, and Landway are all zoned R6. So where she's seeing that the properties adjacent to this are all R9? I don't know. Because even to the west of Navajo as well, too, which is on Allen Brook Street, that is all, also zoned R7. What we are asking is that this property stay R7 instead of getting, well, I guess currently, right now, it's R6. Some is agricultural, R6 to R9. But R9 does not represent what is around this surrounding area. Our job is, we would like to keep the neighborhood the same and not overcrowd the density. You've already heard reports of Davis Road and how terrible the road is. But our concern, obviously, too, is with our land value of our homes, but just in keeping coordinates with what is already there. R7 is what's there. And that is what we would recommend to the city, that if the property is annexed to the Temple Terrace, which we don't have a problem with the annexation because the property to the north is already annexed in the Temple Terrace, we would just recommend that it stay R7.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Would anyone else like to speak on this item, which is the comprehensive plan and future land use map amendment? Mr. Loeb?
I'm kind of curious about not mentioning about impact fees. Obviously, I don't have to be a genius to figure out that there's going to be an impact on the neighborhood, and Davis Road particularly. I was wondering if that impact fees or talk, or about a discussion about impact to the neighborhood that's already over there. I do think developments need it, but I also think that the impact, you know, should be taken care of, too, first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Mary Jane Brock. I live on 8709 West Landway Drive. My problem is not that you're going to put it in Temple Terrace. That's fine. It's okay with us. Problem is that a lot of the streets on Davis, that go up to Davis Road, are dead-end streets. We only have one way out of our street, and there's a lot of streets the same way, and a lot of single houses adjacent to Davis Road. They only have one way out, too. So you're going to put that property that you just owned, this property, and all those houses that you're going to put there that you want to do, what did you say, R9? That's a lot of people. We'll never get out of our street. And there's no way for us to get out. There's a drainage hole behind us, and behind that's the interstate. So that's what we have the problem with, is the density of what you want to do with it. Put houses there. Somebody's going to do something with the land. The cows are gone. But that's the problem that I have. And you're taking down some awfully beautiful oak trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. Yes, sir.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Luis Gonzalez. I live on Mr. River Court, one of the neighborhoods to the south of the property being spoken about today. And I just wanted to record, I want to second what the gentleman and the lady here have witnessed and, you know, talked about today about the density of the neighborhood and how bad Davis Road has gotten. I've been living there close to 10 years. And on the 10 years, there's been an Amazon warehouse being built in there. There's been a VA hospital. The Gulf Range has turned into a big ass, I'm sorry about my language, big neighborhood over there. And basically, exactly. And that, the traffic in the area has gotten bad. I mean, I leave my house in the afternoons to go to the gym on Fowler Avenue. And when I try to get on Fowler from Davis Road, right now, the traffic backs up all the way almost to where they live. If you go the other way, you got to deal with all the, all the traffic going on Temple Terrace Highway, plus the new light that was installed that's going to be going on live soon in front of the VA hospital. So basically, that adds time to all of our commutes, wherever we're trying to go. And we love living in this side of town. So, I mean, I don't go down to Del Mayberry anywhere down that side of town because I don't like the traffic there. I love it here, and I pretty much don't have a problem with them, you know, with the annexation part of it. You know, welcome into Temple Terrace, but please do consider keeping it R6 or R7 to where the density is, you know, controllable. And if you can, please do something about that road. It's gotten bad. There's potholes everywhere. And when it rains, water does puddle. There's big puddles on both sides of the road. So when you're trafficing through the area, when it's raining, it's almost like a game of chicken. Like, people are coming over, and then you got to either dodge the thing or just stop, wait for the person, and go around the puddle. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none?
No.
He's?
Staff would like to say something.
I wanted to address one of the comments real quick. I think there might be a little bit of confusion between the land use districts and the zoning districts. Those are two separate things. For Temple Terrace, if we can get the slides back up. For, in Temple Terrace, our future land use districts are R4, R9, and R18. So that's the current zoning. Let's go to this map here. So the orange is R9. We only have 4, 9, and 18. Hillsborough County has 6. We don't have an equivalent of 6. I just wanted to make sure that was.
Thank you for that clarification. And the applicant, would you like to address this?
Yes, again, for the record, Kevin Rialy with Sterns, Weber Miller at 401 East Jackson Street in Tampa. The, I was going to point out the same thing that staff pointed out, that there's some conflation between zoning and future land use. If property is annexed, then it has to be given a future land use for the city because it has a future land use for the county now. And the options are 4, and it jumps all the way to 9. It's not before you for this item, but we'll talk about density in the next item. 6 would have been fine for us. But the entire area is actually R9 in the city. The portions that are shown as R6, those are the county areas. The next closest property to here in the city is actually an even higher designation, where you all get to control what density actually gets put there. If you don't want to see something at, in R9 density is that the zoning and the PD process, which is severed from this. But with all the adjacent property in the city being R9, R9 is the most appropriate, and that's why staff and the planning commission both support this. Thank you.
Thank you. So, council questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
So mine has to do with the land use versus zoning. And that is, if we were, so right now, it's got a county designation of R6. If we approve in this ordinance, in the first reading, I know, but R9 designation in Temple Terrace, how does that affect city councils? If that's a land use that's allowed, how then does that affect our ability to encourage maybe less density because of the area?
The comprehensive plan does regulate density. So if you approve nine units per acre, it'd be nine times the acreage, which is 4.18. But later on, you would see that they are including the parcel to the north, which is designated R9 right now. So it regulates density.
So I don't know if this is the right time to ask this because if we, if we went with the R9, and how does that, because we also have a building code that says lots have to be a certain size per the square footage of the homes built there. And right now, we're looking at saying, okay, this is an appropriate land use, but I don't even know if, if this property, the size specifically, could be divided into lots that meet the building code that meet the building code that would align with, with nine units per acre.
For the comprehensive plan, you're looking at compatibility with the surrounding area and the future land use map I had shown earlier. This is the first reading and first public hearing, so it'll be shown again on the 19th. They are separate land use actions, but obviously related, so. But for comprehensive plan, it regulates the density, and you're looking at compatibility with the future land use map. I don't know if that, I know you won't be able to see it till later on, but...
Well, I guess it, it, where I'm coming from, my concern is that if I say R nine, and I get it, we, we have, we jumped from R four to R nine, we don't have anything in between, but if I say, okay, R nine is an acceptable land use, it does match what is around the property, but they're already developed, so they don't, well, we're talking land use, not zoning. So, so, but they're already developed, okay? So they've already been plotted and, and they're done. It's a known entity. If I'm looking at, at land use and I'm saying R nine is acceptable, then it hasn't been plotted or developed. I guess what I'm saying is, to me, it seems like I might be agreeing to something and saying R nine is an acceptable density, but then I actually don't believe that R nine, that nine units per acre is an acceptable density for this area and the, the street right now. So I don't want to, I don't want to agree to something that I actually don't think would work.
I will say that the property to the north, what the applicant also owns, that's the 2.4 acres, that was pulled from Hillsborough County into Temple Terrace in 2011, and the same thing happened. They had a comprehensive plan amendment to go to R nine, and that hasn't been developed yet. But I understand your concerns. I just wanted to let you know that.
Mr. Sherman, I've had something to add.
I want to make one comment. So the R nine future land use map category is the maximum density allowed in the R nine future land use, nine units per acre is the maximum density allowed. It's a policy call. If y'all, if the council wants to go up to nine units per acre, they can approve less than nine units per acre gross density as well. Nine units is the maximum density allowed in that future land use map category.
Okay. That answers what I asked. Councilmembers, questions? Yes, Mr. Schisler.
Thank you. Where did, in the comprehensive plan, where did the number 7,435 come from?
Yes, that is a policy...
Is that our policy or county policy?
That is Temple Terrace.
So between now and 2050, we're putting another 7,000?
2040.
2040, I'm sorry.
That's HSG Objective 1.1.
That's what I, I thought, I thought you had said that. Yeah, it's, I, I just, I want to risk not making a comment, just ask questions at this point. So, that was the only question I had as, as far as that goes, but I will have comments.
Does anybody know the difference in the number of homes theoretically, since we don't have an R, R six? But if an R six was there compared to an R nine, what would be the difference in number of homes? If somebody could just give me a ballpark?
Go back to the chart.
Six times the 4.18, so...
Oh, 12.
Yeah.
What, the difference is 12 or the...
Oh, the difference.
Okay.
Per acre?
I think that'd be total.
Total, okay.
Is that including the land to the north that you already have?
No.
No, okay. So what would be the total number? And someone answering has to come to the podium. So if it were to be R nine and you build the R nine, which we don't know that yet, but that, what would be the number of homes?
So, your question is for both pieces or for just the piece we're discussing here? Because the, the future land use change is only for the piece being annexed. And I'll answer both if you want, but I just want to make the distinction.
I'm just trying to get a handle on the difference between what's currently there, even though it's county R six. If it stayed the same compared to what you want, what could be done? I don't know what you want. You haven't told us yet.
So that difference would be about 12 units to the acre. And I mean, you know, what's being discussed here, the R nine...
12 to the acre?
Sorry, I'm sorry. 12 total. It's a, it's a difference of three per acre, and it's a little over four acres.
Okay.
So, and you can't round up, so you have to round down. So for a little over four acres, four times three is, is your 12.
Okay.
And then the extra acreage, you know, would be water under the bridge, so to speak. Now, again, with this, with the future land use approval, that's the maximum. The zoning approval is where you all decide how much you want to see there.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That answered it. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. So I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the imagined 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map for One Parcel of Land Located South of East Fowler Avenue and West of Davis Road, addressed as 10024 Davis Road, and totaling 4.18 plus minus acres lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County. Legally described in Exhibit A attached hereto by changing the future land use designation on said property from Residential Six, Hillsborough County, to Residential Nine, Temple Terrace, for CPA 23-02, providing for amendment of the official future land use map of the city, providing for severability, providing for correction of typographical errors, repealing all ordinances, parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
If the ordinance is acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance approving a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment for Folio 037534-0000 and addressed as 10024 Davis Road.
Okay. Move to approve on first public hearing and first reading of the ordinance adopting a comprehensive plan, future use map, future land use map amendment for Folio 037534-0000 and addressed as 10024 Davis Road, with the second reading to be scheduled March 19th.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Schisler.
Okay. To, to your point that, that Councilmember Fernandez said that this is for the land, land development or comprehensive plan only. The maximum it could be used for is nine per acre, okay? We can modify that, I believe, if I'm understanding that correctly, we can require that to be much less. But that's not this, that's not this ordinance. And just, just so the public knows, that's, that's another discussion we're going to have in, in a couple of minutes. So I have, I too have reservation, I drive Davis Road every day, and I too have reservations. But I also stood up when the River, River End, or whatever the project is for the golf course, and cha, and challenged the, the traffic engineers at that point, and they, we, we got changes made. We had things done to make it a safer environment. So I'm going to support the ordinance, you know, support this first reading, but it's going to have some work to do to get the, the next step, but, so, I just wanted to make that comment on the, the general status of it.
That's one of my first comments. Okay. Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nonays? The motion carries. Are we on? What are we on?
E, C.
Okay. Item E, first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance adopting a rezoning of Folio Number 037534-0000 with an address of 10024 Davis Road and unknown address Folio Number First, I'll open the public hearing, and anyone who intends to speak on this matter, we need you to please stand for the oath administered by the city clerk.
Do you swear, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is, how you got?
Thank you, and now I need to request the city attorney to make an inquiry on ex parte communication on this matter.
This is the time where anyone on city council should state whether they have received any ex parte communication concerning this matter. If you have received anything in writing, then you need to, and I believe there was one thing, there may be more that I don't, not aware of. If there's something that you received in writing, then it needs to be made available to the city clerk for the record, and you need to state the, who you received that from and the sum and substance of the content of that message, as well as the date on which you received it. If it was an oral communication, you also need to provide the same information with regard to that communication. For the record, there was, I know, a written communication that was received and responded to by the mayor. I believe you have copies of that particular one. The clerk also has that, and I had provided a copy of that same one to the applicant. If you've received anything else, you need to state what that is.
I don't have anything else.
I have nothing else.
Just the one mentioned, that's all.
I have nothing beyond the one mentioned.
Thank you.
And if you could just, if somebody would just state who that was received from, I know the mayor's comment is in there, but who was the original, the clerk?
It was from, it was from Russ Patterson and Jeff Hauser. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, city planner Miranda Anaya will explain.
Time out. Time out. I have, I have something.
Yes.
Because I thought this was what you were talking about, but today I received an email from the city clerk that was comments from, that came from the Board of County Commission thing. That's different than what you're talking about, correct? So I received that today.
It's sent to all the council members.
Okay, and, and who was that from?
It was from the planning commission, from Unica Mills.
I, I think what might have happened is, is that the comment from the, that you mentioned from Mr. Patterson went to the county first, apparently an error, and then they sent it to us. So it's, it is the same one.
Okay, thank you.
If there's any question from the applicant, okay.
Thank you. City planner Anaya.
Okay, so this is the first reading and first public hearing for RZP 2302. This is the last land use action requested by the applicant.
Is this the old one?
That's the old one, yeah. Okay, here's an aerial of the subject property. It's approximately 6.7 acres. The applicant is requesting to propose a zoning for, to go to PD, planned development for 32 single-family homes. The current zoning for the northern parcel is R seven, Temple Terrace, and the southern parcel is zoned ASC1 Hillsborough County, which stands for Agricultural Single Family Conventional, one unit per acre. The existing uses are single-family residences on the northern parcel and the southern parcel. Here are some photos to the southwest, east, and north of the subject property. The west photograph is taken internally. You can see that there is some vegetation on the property. This is a zoning map of the surrounding area. For residential Temple Terrace, it consists of mostly PD and R seven zoning districts. Here's the survey submitted by the applicant. And here's the latest master plan submitted by the applicant, February 16, 2024. Originally, the applicant had submitted for 36 single-family homes. After speaking with Hillsborough County, they had to relocate the driveway apron, which brought them down to 34 units. And staff originally had concerns with some of the lots having less than 40 feet on the road frontage, so they did redesign the site, and they made improvements. The last middle, which is this middle on the screen, proposes 32 single-family lots, and they each have 40 feet at the road. The PD requirements state that you have to base your bulk standards off of the closest zoning district, which in this case would be R seven. However, modifications can be made if it's in the best interest of the PD and the city. Standard, single-family lots, less than 70 feet, have to be a PD because it goes by zoning district. R seven has to be 70 foot wide, 7,000 square feet, so we jump, that's the lowest zoning district, so anything less than 70 feet has to be a PD. Of course, there's exceptions if you're annexed in or not. But those are the requirements for vacant lots that are developed in Temple Terrace. As I mentioned, PD does allow for flexibility. The applicant is requesting small, smaller area lot sizes and area widths compared to R seven. Upon researching, the city has approved a few subdivisions that are 40-foot-wide lots. I know that was a concern with a lot of the public and staff. The applicant is keeping the rest of the bulk standards, like required yards and building coverage, the same. And here's a typical elevation that was submitted by the applicant. They are requesting for one-car garages. This is a typical, in my proposed conditions, I do have a condition that states that it has to be substantially similar to this elevation, so that way there's not too many deviations from what is shown here. The planning commission did review the zoning application and recommends approval. The DRC had no objections, and staff recommends city council approve the first reading and first ordinance, first reading, sorry, and first public hearing of RZP 2307. Public comments have been received. There are a few outstanding questions that staff has as far as regarding whether the, the proposed roadway would be public or private and what amenities would be in the park. Other than that, the last slide is the suggested conditions. I won't read any, I won't read them unless you would like me to, but I can go into further detail with any of these proposed conditions. There are nine.
Thank you. Open it up for a public comment now. Mr. Hauser.
First, I'd like to apologize to the council members for not knowing the difference between the land use and the residential zoning. I'm not a land attorney, so that stuff is, you know, getting to, to know all that here is, is well-known. We also want to make it known, too, that we are not trying to prohibit the applicant from, from building. Like, having the, the property developed is, is great. You know, it's been sitting there unused, and if it can be used, we think that's, that's good for our community. Like I said, our biggest concern is with the zoning. Navajo Avenue, 70-foot lots. Navajo to the east, 70-foot lots. Elmdale, 90-foot lots. Landway, 95-foot lots width. We just want to see it stay what it is. I know they keep telling that there, yes, there are some planned developments to the south on Davis Road, but if we keep packing in these homes and planned developments on Davis Road, it's not even going to be usable. So we are really appreciative for someone wanting to develop this land, but our recommendation to the city is, since the land, future land use is R nine, we recommend that the zoning stay R seven, which is what their property that they actually own now to the north, the two acres, is already zoned R seven. And that's what we would like to see it not set to a planned development. Because once you set it to a planned development, if they decide to pull out of their project, then someone else can come in and say they want to build however many, 30, 40 homes on their lot. If you look at the one map that showed their, I don't know how to get back to it, that showed their lots, it showed that on the one side of the street, there's 21 lots. That's as many homes as our whole neighborhood, which is about the same acreage as what they have. And they're trying to put that many homes just on one side of the street. That's just way too much density for our area. That street is not going to be able to handle that. So we're just asking that we keep in accordance of what's already there. R seven is already zoned. We feel that that, the other four acres should be zoned R seven and make it like the rest of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Yes, sir. You state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Carl Johnson. I am from Navajo Avenue, 8647. Forgive me where I'm dressed, I came straight from work, and I'm a little dirty. Anyhow, I would like to, I concur with what my fellow friends have to say regarding the density, and I'd like to say I'd like the city to take a holistic approach at developing in Temple Terrace. We've been trying to do it downtown, and we've been trying to get safety harbor, celebration. You know, I'm just kind of repeating the words that the mayor has said, nobody wants to build in Temple Terrace. At the same time, I agree, we would like housing there. We would like more green spaces, but the idea of compacting people into a small area, like, I had to say, like ten fish in a sardine can, it really doesn't necessarily embody the vision of Temple Terrace and what the council, council members like, well, that Temple Terrace can become. We, we agree that affordable housing is very important, and we agree that that should happen in Temple Terrace. But at the same time, we would like a measured approach and not just go to 60 houses in a tiny area, packing people in where people don't even have a sense of community. We're trying to, as I said, let's look at having a holistic approach and take our time deciding whether this should be zoned for the capacity... in deciding whether this should be zoned for the capacity that our friends are looking for. I am thinking that it's, and we, I think, we will agree that the density is really more than what I think is acceptable and can be encompassed right now on, on Davis Road. You know, again, we lost some green space with the golf course, driving range gone. You know, we have a dog park just to the, to the, to the south or west, I can't remember the directions right now. But I just said, let's just slow down and really look, is this capacity really what Temple Terrace wants? And do we want to continue doing it? We have enough apartments, we have enough, um, single duplex homes. I look at what Habitat for Humanity did over by, over by IHOP, you know what I mean? And that's low-income housing. This, actually, they put, the space in there is large. We're not asking for that same size space, but we're not asking for another breed for those at the same time. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this? Mr. Patterson.
Hi, I'm Russ Patterson. I live at 8701 Elmdale Place in Tampa, unincorporated Hillsborough. I prefer to see the proposed development off Davis Road to be a little bit less dense. The lots planned for these houses are much smaller than those on Temple Terrace roads of Navajo, Coral Don, Trevor Oaks, and Queen Brooks, and also the Hillsborough County roads of Elmdale Place, Landway, and Mystic River. They're all right by the, right that area. The density of this development will change the character of the neighborhoods in the immediate area. I don't oppose the idea of affordable housing, although what's affordable nowadays sure doesn't seem very affordable. Why can't the development be more like the development that is on Sweet Daisy Lane over there by IHOP? Those are, those are nice houses, and they would fit right in to our, our neighborhood. It'd be ideal if the developer would, would reduce the number of houses. I would, we would very much appreciate that, or if the council has to demand that the developer reduce the houses. On a personal note, I know you can and have voted down applications and recommendations by your city staff. The council denied my application to be annexed voluntarily, even though the Temple Terrace city staff recommended approval. So I'm not going to be here for the March 19 meeting, as I'll be with my 99-year-old mom in Texas, and that doesn't, since I'm not going to be here, that doesn't mean I'm giving up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Well, we seem to have, Ralph Giordano, once again, 8716 West Landway. I would like to thank each and every one of you for paying such close attention to what we've been saying. It's, it's just an issue of having a good life. Fighting to get out of your street is not on that list. It's a very difficult thing to see open land where wildlife, once roamed, going down. Doesn't matter who's going to build on it, whether it's Temple Terrace, just assume. The reason that I cautioned earlier is that it's just not going to be an easy ride, because that road is a major stumbling block to this development and any other future developments along Davis Road. You don't seem to have a partner in Hillsborough County. I tried to speak with the county commissioners. I emailed them and asked them to consider it. Watch my head. Decision was already made. Oh, yeah, we're just going to turn this over to them. It's now your problem, as far as the county commission is concerned. So if you could at least cut down the, the amount of homes that are going to be in there, because it's a quality-of-life issue. And, you know, yeah, 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 I know all the property along there, different sizes and stuff. We've been in that area for almost 50 years. There was no interstate when we bought our property. So that's how long we've been there. We've watched it change from sleepy, backwards, to it's a daily commuter route for thousands of people. If they've ever done a road count on Davis, I'll bet they would find that. So anyway, we'd like some consideration at bare minimum of taking it easy on the lot size, okay? At least, instead of making us have 65 homes in there, would it be so awful to have 40 or 50? They're still going to make a ton of money, haven't they seen the prices? They want to give me a half a million dollars for my $20,000 house. What are you, nuts? And then where am I going to go? So anyway, thank you for being so patient and kind, and I certainly hope that you will consider that this property is across the street from you. And do you want all of this traffic on a dilapidated road like Davis? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Yes, sir.
Did everyone get sworn in?
Yes, they, they did.
Well, we may, may as well. Had a little humor in this.
Your name and city.
I've been knowing many.
Sir, can I have your name and?
Friends with many mayors.
Your name.
May.
Please tell us your name.
Oh, Jack Gay. I live on Lake Elmdale.
Thank you.
Anyway, I've been knowing many mayors and city councilmen, Temple Terrace. They always want to upgrade their community. We, we made projects before, and they failed, and we wish we'd have went a little better. Well, I feel like this is a project that needs to be kept, R7 to keep, with the upgrade of Temple Terrace. So, I mean, it's added to many traffic. I lived there 50, 51 years. So, anyway, I'd like to keep the traffic down as much as we can, and I know it's hard, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Yes, Ms. Gayle. Oh, one second, sir. You're next.
My name is Candy Gayle. I live at 8701 Elmdale Place, right on Lake Elmdale. If you ever drive down Davis on a rainy day, you can see Lake Elmdale in my front yard. But my comment is, I, I almost want to say, don't let the houses come in at all. This part of Temple Terrace, there's no parks of any kind for the people there. You know, you go around Temple Terrace and inside the proper, on the other side of the river, you have a lot of little parks and places and things to do. On Davis Road, there's nothing for the children or the people to have any kind of recreation. I just wanted to throw that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ms. Elie Rosario, I live on 8632 Navajo, and I second what my neighbors are saying. The biggest thing is, you're talking 40-foot-wide lots. That's, I think, what they've agreed upon. Like we said, none of the other lots are like that, and the biggest problem is the traffic that it's going to bring. I'm the neighborhood runner. I run up and down Davis all the time, and it's already a hazard as it is. You know, I, and so there's no room for sidewalk improvements, sidewalks are falling apart. So we're annexing all this property, but we should really be also annexing the road so that you can make not just the neighborhood, but just the overall neighborhood. So I'll just try to move to see if, if we can get these fewer lots there and try to make, do something about the road. I mean, I think, like you mentioned, you drive on a daily basis. I drive it on a daily basis, and I run it on a daily basis, and it's, it's really a safety hazard. You're going to wait for a kid or someone to get hurt out there before we do something about it. I think we need to do something now. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rosario. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
My name is Harry Todd. I reside at 8605 Navajo Avenue, and I just want to say, we are pleased that the motion to be annexed in the Temple Terrace passed, because we feel good dealing with our small city rather than the large Hillsborough County, and we trust that you will investigate this and do the right thing with everything. We are a neighborhood there that has all 70-foot lots. All the lots are nice and spacious. The streets are landscaped, excellent lighting, sidewalks, and we have a lovely neighborhood, and we just want to be sure this annexation has a lovely neighborhood when we're finished. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
I apologize, I need to go back to ex parte communication. City manager brought to my attention a, an email that was from Mr. Giordano, sent to the county commissioners on the 2nd of March. Is that the one council chamber that you were talking about?
That's the one I was talking about.
Okay. That probably was seen by the rest of council, and it basically, it was asking the county commissioners for their support to reject the proposed plan to increase land use residential density. So that was it. Did, did you want to, that, that's basically the gist of it. I can show this to you. Do you have a, does the clerk have a copy? The clerk has a copy of that.
I mean, I think that's pretty consistent with the public comment we're hearing today, so I think that's.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, we, so I don't have a presentation, but I do have a packet with some, some pictures, if I may approach and hand these out. I have some for the clerk, too, so you can keep the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, for the record, Kevin Reali with Sterns-Ever Miller Land Use Law Firm at 401 East Jackson Street in Tampa. You know, these slides are mostly, mostly images, and I, you know, forgive me, I'll do my best to describe what's on here, but I promise, it's, it's nothing particularly earth-shattering, and it's similar to what we saw with this task presentation. The first slide just generally shows where this is on a city scale. Slide number two, the numbers on the bottom left. And, you know, you all know where it is, so that's not that important. But the second slide has the same information and shows where the property is when you look a little bit more closely. And the property is 6.7 acres. In this map for the property appraiser records, you can see that a couple of concerns that the, the public made with the development in the area, well, there are lots in the range of 70 feet, but there are also are lots that are 40 feet. And the other concern with how much more can Davis Road take, there's really not a lot left to be built out for this. Most of the area is platted subdivision. If not, it's, it's county unplatted homes. And so, you know, there really is, we really are coming to a built-out point in this area. On the fourth page, it's just another picture of the future land use map, but you all saw that in detail before. Oh, I, oh, great, you all can see this up top. The zoning proposed here, of course, is PD, you know, PD being the purple, it doesn't really show how we're meeting compatibility by a map, because the colors are so different. So for the project overview, I, I think that even though we're dealing with 40-foot lots, you know, the residents are looking at that site plan and seeing 40-foot lots and thinking that there's a lot of incompatibility and thinking nothing's been done to create compatibility. But there actually was some thought put into this, and I'm going to try and go over some of those things. First of all, we're only proposing 32 homes here, so that's a density of 4.78. The larger areas, anywhere from, you know, from the mid-3s to the, the mid-5, not mid-5s, I'm sorry, mid-4s. So, right, we're, we're right in the range, that three-to-five range for the density of the larger area. And yes, we are proposing 40-foot lots, and that's why we're using the PD application, because the, the R7 standard for that 70-foot lot, that doesn't work for an affordable housing development, and that's the, the goal here. The, the applicant will speak a little bit in a minute, but their goal typically is affordable housing, and they're often trying to serve veterans. They work with funding sources like, I, I won't go into it too much, but they'll, they'll explain that. And so you, you have to have a smaller product and a smaller lot to make that work. And so what we have done here is we've agreed to a single-story house and the rest of the R7 standards. So while the, the lot size and the lot width is less, we're still meeting the building footprint. So it's not, it's not a two-story building, you know, right up to those lines where, you know, you're maximizing that density and maximizing how much, how many people can live there and how many can fit in there. Instead, it's to try and offer a different product type for affordable housing. Instead of an apartment, these people get their own single-story home. It's still only about 1,100 square feet, and by make, by limiting to that building footprint and limiting to that single story, even though we have 40-foot lots, we think it's a compatible product, given the general area and the density and the fact that there are 40-foot lots with two-story homes that are, that are built to the, the max in the, the greater area. It has garages, sidewalks, and there will be a playground area near the, in the open space near the front of the development. It'll have, you know, basic, a basic playground for kids to play with, slide and things to climb on. We don't, we don't have the exact unit picked out, but it'll be something with those amenities. On the next slide, it's the site plan, which staff already showed you, and the changes that were done here is, first, the, the road is curved. That's the county requiring that. They want this road to line up with the road across Davis to prevent conflicts and prevent danger with intersections when, when cars are turning, going the wrong direction. And so when they did that, the site plan had to be redesigned to, to have that curve, and so lots, lots were lost there. And then staff said, we understand that you're meeting the code with a 40-foot lot on some of these curves, but we don't really think that's compatible with the area, so we want you to make it a 40-foot frontage. So the average lot is, is bigger than a 40-foot lot. So the smallest lots are the ones that are the rectangles. Anything on a curve is actually going to be bigger than what the standard 44, 40-foot lot would be. The, again, I mentioned how the height limit and the building footprint limit helps ensure compatibility, and then the concern that this could be flipped on you. With the PD, what's interesting about the PD zoning process is, you know, we're asking for something special, the 40-foot frontage, but in return for that, we're agreeing to limit that height and limit the building footprint, consistent with the R7 standards, and that can't change. If someone else was to purchase the property, if something fell apart and this business, you know, wasn't able to develop, and someone wanted to build something different, they would have to come back to you. Either that, or they have to build what's here. So, you know, you, you do hold that control, and again, with the density at four point, about 4.7, it is in the character of the area. So traffic, this one, I hope we can try and see, I'll try and center it. So the, the portion you have here circled in blue, we have a transportation engineer here who has studied in the area and worked in the area. That's the result of his study. I'm going to try and translate that, and if you all have questions, we'll bring him up. But I want to paraphrase it the best and be the go-between here. So the red circle there is the peak hour trips. What that means is that the busiest part of the day, this is how many trips we think are going to come and go from the property, based on the engineering practice they use. And that number is 35. The county has a limit, and we're accessing the county road, as everyone talked about, of 50 trips to require a bigger study. Now fortunately, we were able to do some intersection counts to get an idea of what is happening on Davis, but this, this doesn't even meet the county's de minimis requirement, which is to say, it generates so little traffic that they don't want it studied in order to get our right-of-way permit. They're more worried about where that roadway is, and if you're going to put sidewalks along the road than they are about the number of trips, because while the perception is 32 homes would create a lot of trips, it's actually, uh, single-family detached creates, you know, a pretty small number of trips, and they're small units at that. Now, some of the residents talked about the VA or, and Amazon, those are totally different things that create lots of trips. So let's put this into something that's more digestible. At the peak hour, so the busy part of the day in the afternoon, it's estimated that there'd be more than a minute and a half between a car coming or going from this subdivision. Now, of course, it doesn't work perfectly on an average. You may have three go back-to-back, but then you might have five minutes with nothing. So a minute and a half, think about a, a, a long traffic light. A long traffic light is longer than that, and that's what's predicted here. Over the day, there's an average of less than one car every three minutes leaving the property. So that's a, a long gap. The perception of all the trips that are created by this type of development are, are just a little bit, you know, people are conflating what might come from a commercial development with what happens at a single-family development. The bar graph on the right, from top to bottom, that's the capacity of Davis. The bar graph on the right, from top to bottom, that's the capacity of Davis Road. The blue is the current counts, that's the current number of trips that are measured on Davis Road. And then the red shows what this project would do in the peak hour. The green represents everything, from an engineering perspective, that's available capacity in the road. And so there are two things here, one, you can see the development's a very small impact, but two, you can see there's a lot of excess capacity here. The testimony we heard tonight that there are problems with Davis Road, and that may be true, but that's what impact fees are for. This project will pay impact fees, and importantly, have a very small impact on the number of trips for the road. With that, I'd like David Smith to come up, he's a planner in our office, and he's going to talk about some more of the compatibility from an expert perspective.
No problem. David Smith, Sterns Weaver Miller, Director of Development and Zoning.
You leave this here, they can see it.
I have a little, little less than 50 years of experience in zoning and land development in Hillsborough County, Temple Terrace, and the surrounding area. In looking at this particular project, the rez-9 land use, just as stated earlier, provides the umbrella, up to nine units could be considered here for various product types. What the development that's proposed here proposes is 4.78 units per acre, a planned development that is designed to be an affordable product. Affordable product today means land costs are high, infrastructure costs are high, so if you can spread them over more units, that brings down the price of the product, and if you have a smaller product, that results in a lower cost. So looking at your goals, objectives, and policies in the City of Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, clearly 4.78 units is consistent with the R9 designation, which is the most comparable designation to the R6 that was at the county, that's available to you. The PD proposes uses consistent with the R9, single-family detached units. It furthers the policies on the housing element, which provide for affordable housing developments, and that doesn't necessarily mean what people get concerned about, subsidized housing. We're talking about housing that's affordable to the average person today, with the housing prices, as you've mentioned, they're going through the roof. We also provide, it provides in the comp plan, provide affordable housing options. The options are smaller house, smaller lot, less cost. This provides a variety of housing types. I lived in Temple Terrace for, probably off and on, for 16 years. I lived in small lots, I lived in big lots in Teresa Harbor, and the variety of housing types is what makes the community work. You can't have all one type and expect everything to just be perfect for the community, you have to have a variety to deal with the service workers, the firemen, the rich people, middle income, all those people make the community work. When you look again further, it says, provide private sector opportunities. Really what we're asking for here, this development, is a private sector opportunity to provide a housing option at a price point and a size that makes it reasonably affordable. Provide diversity of housing type, this checks the box. Higher density in newly annexed areas, we're not really getting higher density, we're giving you the average density essentially that's throughout the area at about 4.78 units per acre. 1.7.4 says, by proposing smaller lot sizes and providing greater choice, that is what this development proposes to do. By proposing smaller lots and lot configurations promoted by the policy, that us all provides consistency with the comprehensive plan. Essentially, from a land planning perspective, this project is not only consistent with the comp plan, but when you look at compatibility, when you look at the abutting property, one, we have undeveloped property to the south, we have ASC zoning to the north, which is county zoning, and we have the subdivision that many residents are from, which are just to the north, that are, that have been discussed as the R7. When you look at the graphic, we only have three lots that back up to one house, and it's the side yard of one house in that community. We have 52-foot of setback from the rear lot line to the side yard lot line of the adjacent property, and we have from house to lot line on the adjacent property over 72 feet. So we designed this and set these houses back, providing buffers to the larger lots, provides a transition, and provides for compatibility. It's my professional opinion, having done this for a long time, that this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of Temple Terrace. It's compatible under the standards. As we said, we've only asked for smaller lot sizes and square footage of lots, meeting R7 standards everywhere else. Be glad to answer any questions, and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Shu with Rebuilding Together, 3914 US 301. Just to give a little understanding of who Rebuilding Together is, we've been serving Tampa for 23 years. Last year, we, I think 1,100 homes we rehabbed for people that can't afford repairs on their homes, and we continue to keep doing that. This is an affordable housing development, because, as you all know, housing isn't affordable anymore. And to, the Navajo homes, I mean, if you were to look at purchasing one of those homes right now, you're looking at $500,000 to $700,000. I mean, who can afford $500,000 to $700,000 right now to purchase a home?
Continue, please.
On his side, that's, they're $500,000 to $700,000.
Sir, you can continue.
I'm sorry. So, you know, we're trying to provide a product for people that are trying to start themselves off, to get a home, to provide themselves a safe environment for them, their children, that can't afford these high prices. We're trying to provide a small home that gives them the comfort, the safety to feel, I own something, I have a home, I have, I have equity that I'm starting off with, and we want to put them in an environment that they can then, you know, continue to keep growing from. So as a nonprofit, as someone that enjoys serving the community, that, you know, we've been serving for over 20 years, we just want the opportunity to provide what people really need, and that's affordable housing. It's just, it's a need right now, and it's, it's so unavailable to so many people that they're being stuck in apartments, and we could easily throw a bunch of townhouses in this and not even reach the maximum plateau of what our density is. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to provide something for somebody to feel like, this is my home, this is somewhere for me to start, or this is somewhere for, a place for me to have and raise my family. Thank you.
So, council?
I was just going to say, I don't have anything now, but we do have our transportation engineer, if you did want to ask questions of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, questions?
Did it close anything?
Not until after, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, council members.
Some questions. How many 40-foot lot complexes are in the area? If you, if you, you don't know, you don't know, that's fine, I don't care.
I don't know the exact, but I did find at least three. I know that the last one that I could find that was approved was, I believe, Sage Brook, which is off of Morris Bridge, and that was approved in 2019 for 40-foot wide lots. I also found on Davis Road is, I can't find it, Bridgeford Oaks, Sage Brook, I wrote down, and Orange River, Orange River Estates, they're 40-foot wide lots, but I'm sure there's more. I think there's actually a 30-foot wide subdivision for single-family detached, but I didn't take a look at the plot. But there are, there are some in Temple Terrace.
Orange River Estates, they would be the Villas, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be the detached homes. I lived there.
Yeah.
They're more than 40 feet. To the developer, will there be a homeowners association?
Yes.
Will it be voluntary, will it be voluntary or compulsory?
It'll be voluntary.
Voluntary, okay, so eventually you'll move out, and if, who's going to take care of that if the, if the homeowners association falls apart?
It'll be a resident.
If it's voluntary.
There's no platting sold, so, so the maintenance requirements would be per code.
How many, back, 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 no, state, don't go far, don't go far. The houses on, up behind IHOP, up in Primrose area, the Habitat for Humanity.
Sweet Daisy.
Sweet Daisy, that's what, how big are they? Do you know?
I don't know off the top.
Okay, how about the ones over on Overlook? The Habitat for Humanity on Overlook.
That was recently approved, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but I can get you those answers.
Brian, do you know?
I don't know off the top.
Okay, all right. The reason I, the reason I bring that up is, pardon me, is that they had tried to, I understand, you're trying to maximize your profitability based upon the land that you got to deal with. Well, he wanted five, they wanted five houses in there, and we finally approved four, okay? My question, as far as the, the overall layout, the overall plotting, is a 50 or a 60-foot wide plot workable in your model?
If we had to go 50 or 60 feet, we would end up having to do townhomes, and that would be the, if 50 or 60 feet's going to force us to do a much larger home, which is going to be two stories, and it's going to take it out of affordability. You know, so you have a choice, it's either build a larger home and charge more for it, or build a smaller home and charge less for it. That's, you know, so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to maximize the amount of homes that we can put somewhere to provide as many affordable housing opportunities as we possibly can. You know, we work with a lot of organizations, so we're serving veterans, we're serving low-income, medium-income, and we're trying to do the best that we can to provide something for everyone. You know, I could follow the Navajo on the opposite side of where we are, but the comps to that are $500,000 to $700,000, and it's just impossible for, I mean, we can get out of it. I mean, it would be another developer that would come in, we would hand it over to them, and they would come in, put 60-foot or 70-foot lots, and put $500,000 to $700,000 brand-new homes, and that would be great. I mean, if that's what you guys are looking for. I mean, but it's our understanding that the comp plan is in need of affordable housing. I mean, it's something that the City of Temple Terrace is looking for, and, you know, us as a nonprofit, we're not looking to maximize our profits, we're a nonprofit organization. All we're trying to do is feed the community and the people that are living and serving in this community with a home that they can afford, where they're not, you know, upside down going to the grocery store. And we all know, every, I mean, interest rates are out of the roof, construction costs are out of the roof, everything is just going higher and higher. We need an opportunity to give people that want to own a home, an opportunity to own a home, in a place where they don't have to spend $500,000 to $700,000 on a new home. I mean, if you look at what's going on over the D.R. Horton, where they're talking about the, the driving range, they start at 4:50, and they go up. Who can afford that these days? There's just, there's single mothers that have children that are in need of housing that we see on a daily basis that we know are in need of a house that they can raise their kids in, that have safety and the space that they need to feel comfortable growing up, and that's how we're trying to do. I mean, it's, we're not a major developer trying to maximize our profits, we're serving the community, and we're trying to do it in the best way that we possibly can.
Understood. I do have some more questions regarding traffic, so you have traffic, your traffic dude is available? Okay. How many projected vehicles are there going to be? These are, these are going to be, in your studies, you're assuming two cars per household?
Michael Gates with Palm Traffic. So we use ITE trip generation to estimate what the trip generation is for the project. So ITE is a national compendium of traffic studies that were done at subdivisions and whatever type of land use it was, and that, they build the national database, and that's what is nationally accepted for estimating trip generation. So to answer your question, it is 27 a.m. peak hour trips, so that is the highest hour between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., and then it was 35 p.m. peak hour trips, which is the highest hour between 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m.
You're assuming one car per household?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, so I don't know many houses, if it's just one house, one car per household.
And that's.
But please, 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 guys.
And that's correct. So that's not saying that there's only one car per household, this is how many trips are entering or leaving the subdivision in an hour. So that, that means like if the person has two cars in the household, on average, they would come in at different times of the day. So one may come home at 4:00, the other may come home at 5:00. Those would be two trips coming to the same household, but they would be in two different hours of the peak hour. So that's why it's only one, essentially one per household over the course of the peak hour.
I'm not so much worried about them coming in, I'm more concerned with them going out in the morning. You're going to, assuming people go to work between 7:00 and 9:00, you have 30-some cars trying to get out onto Davis Road that's already very highly congested, okay? So I, I, you know, I'm not, I can't, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm a bean counter, so I can't argue with, you know, with the, with the stats that you're using, the criteria from, was it the ITE?
Yeah.
But, you know, there's some serious concerns by the resident, the local residents, and I, as a council member, again, I have concerns, it's only going to take one bad accident, and some, our whole family get wiped out on Davis Road, and, you know, we, it's, it's not a good thing. The second question is.
Can I answer that question? Can I answer that question?
There was a question, but okay.
So I did meet with the county engineer, so obviously Davis Road is a county roadway, and I know during the presentation, it was discussed briefly about the realignment, so that the entry road aligns with Elmdale to the east. And so the purpose of that is, to what you were describing, is so that the project driveway aligns with Elmdale, so you relieve the potential for misalignment, vehicles crashing into each other, leaving at different locations. So that was discussed with the county engineer, and the alignment and the traffic generation for that. So that is obviously a big concern, but given the counts we did out there, we did actually at the intersection with Elmdale, we actually went out and did turning movement counts at that intersection to get the volumes that you saw in the presentation. So with those volumes, the estimated traffic from the project, it is going to be as safe as possible for a intersection occurring. You've, you've aligned it to align with another driveway, the volumes are relatively low from a traffic perspective. I understand everyone's going to have an opinion of what that is, but when you look at it from a traffic professional perspective, the volumes are relatively low for the capacity of the roadway.
Was there discussion with the county, county staff regarding a potential traffic signal at that intersection, since it's been realigned?
No, no, so for a traffic signal, you need 53 cars per hour for eight hours of the day making a left from the side street. So extremely high volumes, like, for example, I worked on the VA Center, and so we ended up doing a signal at, on Temple Terrace Highway. And so that was barely meeting traffic signals for the VA.
Follow-up question is, number of children anticipated in that, in that block? Say you get 32 houses, you can put 32 houses in there, affordable housing, there's going to be multiple children, I would imagine, but they're not all going to be grown adults. My counts, there's five or six bus stops all along Davis Road. You're going to definitely add another one to handle the potential children that are going, students are going to be living there. Has anybody, anybody spoken with the school district on what happens with, with, with an influx of 60, 80 kids in that area?
I'll have to refer to the team, but I know I have not.
I have, I've seen those, I see it every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday morning, driving down there at school times, kids running across Davis Road trying to catch buses. Okay, so that, that has me very concerned with, that to me is a significant density issue, okay, especially if it's going Especially if it's going to be quote-unquote affordable houses, single parents, whatever, whatever be the combination, we're going to have a significant increase in the number of school-aged children going through there. And that's, that's, that to me is, is, is a, an important responsibility that we have to consider in, in discussing how the houses get laid out, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I will address at least part of that from the perspective of the connection and how that's going to function. Since Davis Road is a Hillsborough County facility, Hillsborough County has what they call substandard road. So that is basically where you have to go through and evaluate the condition of the road, sidewalks, pavement width, you know, all those types of functions to the roadway that make up what the county considers a standard roadway. So we are going to need to go through that process as part of our permitting for the driveway connection with Hillsborough County. So that may mean sidewalks, that may mean mid-block crosswalks, it could be a bunch of different things related to that. But that will be part of the permitting process of the driveway connection with Hillsborough County.
Would that be just the frontage of the property, or would that be the entire Davis Road?
It could be various parts of Davis Road. Typically, for the size of the project, it would not be all of Davis Road, but it could be segments of Davis Road, or it could be a component of it. But that would be done at time of permitting.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now. Sorry.
Councilmember Chambers.
Thank you. I've got, uh, four questions, um, for anybody, so. In the presentation, it was mentioned that, uh, the road, it wasn't clear whether it was a private road or going to be a public road. Is that correct in the presentation?
Uh, that was in, uh, for the record, Ken Reilly, that was in staff's presentation. This could be, uh, private or public. Uh, if you all did not want it to be public, which is preferred because of utilities, then when you, when you have the right-of-way for the water and sewer, if it was to be private, then, you know, the, the, uh, property would probably have to have a mandatory HOA and, um, to ensure that gets maintained. So it would change, wouldn't change the plating, wouldn't necessarily change development, but it would change the way that the, um, organization is structured.
Okay. And when you talk about maintenance, uh, and I know you said it, but the two park areas, that would be maintained by whom?
So, I, that's something that I hadn't talked with the applicant about before, whether it be mandatory or, um, voluntary HOA. Um, if it's going to be, um, voluntary HOA, then someone's going to have to have that maintenance responsibility. So either it would have to be a, um, it would either have to be an HOA that's mandatory that would have the responsibility to collect fees to do that maintenance, or there would have to be something worked out with the city. Um, it, it can't be left to, to not be maintained. That's right.
Okay. Uh, in the presentation, impact fees were mentioned. What would those impact fees be, and who gets it?
So the, I, I'll let staff answer, but...
Yep, somebody.
Do you want, do you want to take that one? Well, so, and you're going to have mobility fees to deal with transportation issues. You're going to have school impact fees. Uh, school impact fees go to the school board. Um, they're based on the type of unit and the size of unit. Um, the mobility fees are based on the type of unit. And then you have your water and sewer connection fees, which are regulated by city ordinance. So whatever the connection fee and the impact fee is included in, um, in the permitting process to connect to the sewer and the water.
Okay, so the mobility fees would go to the city or the county?
Uh, those go to the county, because it, because it goes for the county's road.
Okay. And my last...
No, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I have that wrong.
City.
Okay.
Mobility fees go to the city. Okay. So the county wouldn't really get any impact fees?
I'll let staff.
Uh, Brian McCarthy, city engineer. Um, since this is within the city limits, even though it's a county road, it'll go, the city mobility fees will apply.
Okay. All right, thank you. And my last question to somebody. What happens if we do not approve item AE?
Uh, this is the first, uh, this is the first, uh, reading and public hearing. So if you don't want to approve this agenda item, um, but you want to approve the comp plan, then they would still have the comprehensive plan of R9. Then you're kind of leaving it open. If you approve R9, then they can have a residential density of up to nine units per acre. The PD actually is the one that's limiting. Uh, PD, um, it's, it's a limitation of the development. So if you approve the comprehensive plan, they can do up to nine units per acre. The PD actually confines the limits of that development. Something to keep in mind.
Well, that, in the, again, and some, somebody said that would, uh, could be townhomes, could be multiple-story homes?
I mentioned it in my, uh, comprehensive plan presentation, but there's actually even some neighborhood commercial that can be done. So the alternative is, yeah, if you, even in the R6, Hillsborough County, even if we didn't annex, it allows for some, uh, neighborhood commercial if it meets location criteria. So the alternative, whether you want the single-family detached or something higher like, uh, townhomes or neighborhood commercial, that's the alternative.
Okay, thank you. I answered it.
Councilmember Fernandez.
So I have some traffic questions. Um, so right now, just visually, a lot of residents feel like they're sitting on the road, they're, they're waiting to exit their neighborhoods longer than they have been in the past. And it's, so can you explain how it, the count says that we have excess capacity, but when you're driving on the road, it does not appear to be excess capacity, it appears to be very well-traveled?
Yeah, and I mean, I think it's, it's always that challenge of perception of capacity. And so from a traffic engineering perspective, that capacity is what the road can handle before it just completely breaks. So as long as you're able to pull out of your subdivision, and then they have, like, it's, they have different time periods that they view, like, level of service for a driveway connection. So like, if you have to wait more than 54 seconds, that's kind of the maximum side of D, which is the acceptable level of service. So if you're sitting at your subdivision waiting to turn left for 54 seconds, you're going to feel like you're there forever. So it's a perception issue, but based on engineering standards that are applied throughout the city, county, state, and the country, the road operates at acceptable level of service, it, and almost half the capacity of the roadway, and that the delays coming out of subdivisions like the proposed project driveway would be minimal and within the acceptable standards, probably in the B, B to C range. So it's a perception, but I, I understand the issue of that perception.
I guess what I'm concerned about is, a lot of the, the neighborhoods that are along this road don't necessarily have another form of egress. They, they, they all know to use this road. I know some of them open onto Morris Bridge, but, um, so it's, just anecdotally and visually, it does seem like there's quite a bit of traffic. So can you go back over what you actually did, the, the steps that you did to actually test and record the traffic counts?
Yeah, yeah. So what we use, we use a third-party data collection company called NDS. They're a national data collection company. They actually go out and do video data collection. So we look at turning movement counts, that's typically the real focus of what we're doing. That's how the vehicles are turning at an intersection. But what they do is they set up a camera, basically on a pole, that videos the intersection, and then does the count from that video. So you actually have video evidence of what that count is. And it's much more accurate than the way you used to do it. When I was going through school, you would go out there with a pen and paper and actually hand-count, or got really complex with a board. But it actually does video. So you actually have the video evidence, and it's about 99% accurate. And so I've done tests on the video data collection to make sure that they actually do count accurately, and that they're a reliable company that does data collection. So with that, that kind of tells you what the volume of the roadway is. So they counted from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and then 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And so we got those highest volumes within that period. So we picked the one hour, so it could be 4:15 to 5:15. So you actually take the highest hour that you observe, and that's the peak hour volume that you saw in the presentation. So it's reliable that it's set by a third party, it's not someone going out there and trying to count it and messing up or anything like that. It's actually video data collection of that information. Did that fully answer your question?
Yeah, so...
Without getting too...
No, well, so, so the count, you, you have physical eyes on that space for those peak times. What would be considered a road, or, I don't want to say a failing road, because we're not talking about, uh, outside of the peak times, but what would be considered a traffic pattern or counts that are excessive?
I, I mean, um, the one that obviously comes to mind is Bruceby Downs before it got widened. I, you know, it was a two-lane roadway out there with, you know, Hunter's Green and, particularly north of the interstate there where Hunter's Green and all those are, that was a failing roadway. And when you looked at the volumes, it was clearly failing, and you could see the failures. And you could see, particularly when you did turning movement counts, you could see what was causing those failures. That, and that's the benefit of the turning movement counts. It, the, the problems in the roadway are not when you can continue on straight, it's when people are stopped making left turns, making right turns. It's those movements that cause a lot of the delays to the roadway. So that's why we always focus on those turning movement counts to give you the full picture, not just what is the volume of the roadway.
But even with Bruceby Downs, and I do remember it when it was a two-lane road...
I lived out there for a while.
But even, e- even with that road, and coming out of Hunter's Green or Tampa Palms, they had lights...
Correct.
To, to at least stop traffic at a certain point so they could get on or off the road. And Davis Road doesn't have any lights, so how does that factor into your traffic analysis?
And that goes to what the volumes are, both on the roadway, and then what the volumes are coming in and out of the subdivision and, like, Elmdale across the street. That's what helps you determine, is there a capacity issue? Are there movement issues that are causing problems? So part of the, other part of this is turn lanes. And so Hillsborough County has standards for turn lanes, for left turn lanes, right turn lanes. And so that kind of tells you when you're reaching a volume that would need a turn lane, that is that threshold. And so Hillsborough County is a little lower on the threshold than some agencies, but we, we are below the volumes for turn lane warrants, both left and right turn lanes. And so that helps guide you in telling you that the volumes are low enough that there is not an operational issue as long as the through volumes are not excessively high.
So in, in this analysis, because we have added some usage in the vicinity, have you, did you see any traffic increase? Uh, it's hard to say increase, you weren't looking at it before that, but did you see of, of a high volume of traffic coming out of some of the usages that have been added in that area, such as the Amazon or the VA?
Uh, so, um, the VA was open when we did the counts. Uh, but they, again, we counted for that, um, and the benefit to the VA's facility being that they did not have access to Davis Road. So when we were doing the VA, they were originally trying to get access to Davis Road. And through discussions with the county and trying to figure out the traffic patterns, all that traffic was focused on Temple Terrace Highway and to the signalized intersection is how that was designed. So, again, I think we accounted for, and then the Amazon facility's been open for a while, and they were also part of the count. So all those were really included, we did not go back and look at the historical volumes that have occurred out there.
Okay, so I guess my question maybe is for city staff. And that is, we know that, we know that traffic has increased on Davis Road just because there are houses there that weren't there when that road was built. So we know, over time, it's increased. But what is our, so while this particular development might only add 35 trips, which it's probably not, it's probably more than 35 trips realistically, but it may not be, but it's incremental, and what, the city doesn't own the road. You know, what can we do as a city, because we're hearing from residents that it's very high in traffic, and that's one of the concerns that has been expressed about, you know, developing this property. And we're hearing that the traffic analysis says that everything's fine, but, I mean, we know it has a lot of traffic on it. So, you know, what can we do as a city to try to get the county to make some improvements?
So, um, ma'am, councilmember, I think this is the same kind of conversation that we've had, uh, with the county, not just for this area, but for Temple Terrace Highway even. We've had the same conversation, asking the county, and, and I don't mean to disparage the county, the staff's been great, they're just struggling with a lack of resources. And so they haven't, for example, repaved Temple Terrace Highway. We drive down that road today, it's falling apart. Uh, Davis Road, I, I've driven this road at peak hour, and I can totally commiserate what the residents are saying. In fact, I questioned the chart that was presented here with the capacity numbers, that, all that green for PM peak, or it says peak, I don't give it that, I don't know if this is PM peak or some sort of an average, but, because if you're there at PM, it's, it's pretty tou, I mean, it's tough. With that intersection up at Morris Bridge at the other, at the, sort of the northern end, it's impossible. People start making U-turns back. So I, I don't want us to be, uh, under any misunderstanding that there is not a problem there. Um, staff has had conversations with the county about Davis Road. I'd actually ask Mr. Tintner, Mr. McCarthy to come up and see, give us the latest of those conversations if he could, if there's any plans or direction that he may have gotten from the, uh, from the county. Uh, it is a, it is definitely a, a challenge, for sure.
So, city staff has requested through the TPO, the Transportation Planning Organization, for Davis Road to have like a, a complete street feel. Right now, that's just on their priority list. I would have to double-check where it falls. Uh, I do know Bullard Parkway, our project on there is ranked higher than our Davis Road, um, request. Right now, that's where we are in terms of, uh, city staff asking for help from the county.
May I?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy, can you, so knowing Davis Road the way you do, is there, how wide right-of-way, is there excess right-of-way right now that the, the county could come through if they, if they had the resources and widen the road to address any kind of capacity concern or turn, or signalized intersection, for example, at the end of it?
Yeah, I believe the right-of-way is pretty constrained. Where the last conversation I had with the county, I believe they're probably going to be looking for, like, right-of-way dedication towards any, any future projects, would probably have to donate some property towards them for any type of expansion of Davis Road.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just have one more question for city staff. So under, under this, so let's say it's R7, not planned development, what would be the number of units that would be allowable on this property?
Um, that is regulated by the comprehensive plan, so you need to go back to the comp plan for the density. But, uh, the R7 states you have to have 7,000 square feet lot size and, and 70-foot wide lots. That's what they're asking a deviation from, is to go to 40 and 4,400, uh, square feet.
So, well, I'm, I'm just curious about, uh... So, well, I'm, I'm just curious about, uh, what the previous zoning in Hillsborough County, the density that would have been allowed under that zoning as compared to what we're looking at?
Oh, the current zoning in Hillsborough County is agricultural, single-family conventional, so that's, uh, one unit per lot. It's for agricultural piece, but they understand in their comprehensive plan it is in an urban area, so that's bound to change.
Okay.
And, uh, Councilmember, just so I had a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you. Um, two, two que-, two questions regarding the, um, PD. Can we, can we mandate or dictate lot sizes within a PD now at this point for the, for this development? Or would it be open for interpretation in the future?
Um, you can ask the applicant to come back with a different proposal. Is that what you're-
Well, I gue-, I guess, you know, I don't like a 40-foot lot or a 40-foot width. I mean, it's too small. All right? So can we say, yes, we can, we'll approve the rezoning this to a PD with a 60-foot lot minimum? Is that within our purview?
Uh, I would not recommend that because the PD, you're going to change the, the zoning to PD, but it's tied to a master plan and the master plan shows the 40-foot lots and then you also have the proposed conditions with it. So, um, if you did want to see 60 or 50-foot lots, I would recommend they come back because you don't want an incompatible master plan with the PD zoning.
Okay, so the master plan is what we just did-
The master plan is the, the site plan that shows all the, the lots and the lot width.
Wait a minute.
So when you zone to PD, you're supposed to have a master plan and conditions?
Okay, we haven't approved a master plan yet, have we?
No. It will be part of the PD, uh, part of the ordinance. It'll be-
That's, this is, this is what we're working on right now, is the master plan for that.
Correct.
Okay? So now is the time, if we want changes made, to make a change to that.
Right. I would just state that if you are requesting changes as far as especially the lot width, that they come back and show that to you. Because now i- if, if, if you regulate 50 or 60-foot lots, but your master plan shows 40 or 50, that's going to create a nightmare at permitting.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I would have them come back.
Okay, so, so we can do that.
Yes.
We can say this PD has to be 45, 42, 50, 60, whatever be the number. Okay?
Oh, I see. Uh, yeah, this is a PD, so they're asking for the deviations.
Right.
The council has the right to, um, it's a negotiation honestly for PD zoning, so, um, you can-
Okay, so we, we have the, we have-
You have the right to suggest different.
Okay, we have, we have that ability. Okay. Um, just, can I make, no, no, I have, I have other comments to be made to addition-
So no more questions?
There were.
Right?
God, I hope not, no.
Uh, I did hear your comment earlier about the school board. The school board is aware of the comprehensive plan amendment, so they are aware some type of development is, is looking to come to this area.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
So with no more, um, questions from council, I'll close the public hearing. And I'm hearing some requests for a, a brief break. So, um, what's the procedure for pausing a meeting and taking a brief break?
You can take a, you can take a short recess, so.
We will be taking a short recess. Please come back in five minutes. That's, uh, 8:52.
Hang meeting here.
I need to go to, I'm dying.
I'm freezing.
Close the public hearing, and now I'll ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
Before we read the ordinance, can we ask not really more questions, but before we read the ordinance, can...
Mike?
Sorry, before we read the ordinance, it would be appropriate to have a discussion as to the overall complexities of the lot sizes, transportation of this nature. Would we be out of line doing that at this point, or should we read the ordinance first?
If you have questions to ask of anybody, then this would be the time. Once the ordinance is read and the motion is made, then public hearing is closed, and now it would be time just for your discussion.
Okay, all right. So in light of that, I'd like to ask the applicant one further, one additional question if we would, if we could. Would you guys be willing to modify the overall footprint? I don't want the perception that me personally, I'm against the affordable housing concept. Okay? In fact, one of my first votes during my initial tenure on council was bucking the system in affordable housing over by the library area, okay, to which I got taken to task for quite viciously in the public. My point is, my concern is that the density in that area is going to be so high that it's just unsafe conditions, and I believe that we could, that a 50 foot lot size, okay? Would you guys be willing to review it, and if you have to come back, come back to us with that, the impact? And I just have a lot of concerns of safety issues, packing that many people into, that many houses into there. I don't necessarily buy the traffic counts. If we expand the roads for turning lane, turning lane is going to go through Mr. Patterson's front yard, for his front door maybe, you know, it's going to go right up next to his house, this type of thing. So, on Elmdale, I just have some concerns that we need to look deeper at this, if at all possible.
Can I ask you a question?
No, no, just, I do worry we've gotten a little bit off the rails with the quasi-judicial process here, though, because the only competent substantial evidence related to traffic was actually what was presented by our transportation engineer today. And that worries me, because state law says that you have to be an expert to apply on traffic, and we've had a lot of pontification on what people perceive as the traffic impact. The expert testimony is that it's compatible, the planning commission, our expert planner, and your planning staff all said that we have compatibility, and we have an expert engineer saying that the perception is not the reality for the safety, that the realignment of the road and the, with the intersection and the capacity of the road doesn't warrant a turn lane, doesn't warrant a signal. And so I do want to just put that on the record, that that concerns me. We're happy to take another look at it, but it's not going to be an affordable project then. So we were talking about a nonprofit that's here, that's trying to do this type of project, and that requires reduced lots and reduced units. And the scale of the units is what creates the compatibility. And the concerns that I'm hearing, we have professional testimony that says that those are not what the concerns should be. And so we're happy to take another look. We'll take a continuance if that's what the city council would like, and we can work with staff, and we can see what that number would be. I hesitate to say that it'd be 50-foot lots, because I don't, I don't think that would work. But, yes, of course, we're happy, we're happy to take another look. But I do want to focus on what that expert testimony is saying, because, you know, that has to be what drives the quasi-judicial process. So if what you're suggesting is a continuance, you know, we would welcome that and work with staff. But I just, I don't know that we're going to be able to get all the way to a 50-foot lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
And as this council has gone through before in other cases of rezoning, what the citizens in the neighborhood can testify to are things that they have experienced and observed. But unless one of them provides their own qualifications, they are not traffic experts. And I'll remind council, what applicant has just said is that the only expert testimony that we've received tonight has been from the applicant's representative on traffic. So the citizens are not experts on traffic, so.
So I think where we are is, I'm asking the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning two parcels of land located south of East Fowler Avenue and west of Davis Road, addressed as 10024 Davis Road, and totaling 6.7 plus minus acres, lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County, legally described in Exhibit A attached here, too, by changing the zoning atlas map designation on said property from zoning classification agricultural, single-family conventional in Hillsborough County to residential seven Temple Terrace to planned development P-Day in Temple Terrace for RZP 23-02, providing for amendment to the official zoning atlas map of the city, providing for separability, providing for correction of typographical errors, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with, and providing for an effective date.
If the ordinance is acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance rezoning Folio Number 037534-0000, with an address of 10024 Davis Road and unknown address, Folio Number 037531-5000.
Well, I'll move to approve the ordinance adopting a rezoning of Folio Number 037534-0000 with an address of 10024 Davis Road and unknown address, Folio Number 037531-5000 on first reading.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Okay, second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes. A comment and discussion. I am concerned with the 40-foot wide lots, myself. We had some other developments that we've had them change to. We do have 40-foot lot developments. I'm not concerned with traffic. I am, because traffic's very bad, but expert testimony shows nothing, and I have not commented on traffic. Whatever comes in there is going to add cars, so something's going to be built there. I'm just personally concerned with the 40-foot wide lots.
Johnson?
I, too, am concerned with the 40-foot lot. I believe it's too small, and we have affordable housing units throughout the city that are larger than 40-foot, and I prefer to, I can't support the motion for the ordinance change at this point. I'd like to see it reviewed, re-reviewed.
While I do think that the number of units is not necessarily a bad thing, I do have a concern about the 40-foot lot, just as the general nature of the city and development in the city. But I'm also trying to figure out how to balance the need for affordable housing with the desire for slightly larger lots, because, I mean, we're, we are a suburban community. We're not Seminole Heights or, or something that is, has a lot more density in the construction. So are, generally speaking, the people who have moved to this area are moving here, and in fact, we have a lot of people that move from a place like Seminole Heights, come here specifically because they want a little bit larger lot, a little bit more space around their house between neighbors. So I am concerned about the 40-foot width.
Well, it sounds like...
I have more comments on that.
Please, please.
Again, I'm all for affordable housing. I'm just concerned with the 40-foot lots, just because of that. My calculations, I'm thinking it's five or six homes. If you go to, let's say, a 50-foot lot, and I know there's no guarantee on that, you're going to lose five or six homes, and that would make a difference in your profit margin, even though you're a nonprofit. But you have to be able to build it. I understand that. If we approve this on first reading tonight, and the applicant gets a chance to go back and maybe reconsider some things, but if not, we can not approve it on second reading, how would that work?
This is essentially considered a reading. No testimony or even action needs to be taken here. This could just be first reading. So if you, you can pass it on first reading, but really, the second reading is the one that is the final action. And if you don't pass it at the second reading, then it fails.
So if we vote on this, and it doesn't pass on first reading, then what happens?
Right now, you can, you're just really moving it to second reading. So if you vote to, you vote, you can vote to approve and move it to a second reading, because Florida law requires two readings. And as I said, essentially, the clerk could just have read the ordinance, and then we move on. But we generally, in this city, have hearings at both readings. So you can, you can vote no and not move it on to the second reading, and then it's done, or you can vote to approve it and move it to second reading. Then you'll have the hearing, you can have the hearing again, and if you can vote no on second reading.
Thank you. So council clearly has some concerns about some of this proposed project. And moving it forward to a second reading allows us more time to consider, and when we bring it back for second reading, we can see how our concerns are addressed and discuss it further at that point. So any more discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we have...
How was your vote?
Oh, aye. Okay, the motion carries. And the ordinance will appear for second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024.
I would ask to extend that date. I don't think that's enough time for the applicant to resubmit.
Can we, do we need to get a date certain to extend it?
Would that be up to the applicant?
It would be better to do that, and so you're going to need to make another motion. You've already made and passed a motion for a certain date. Somebody's going to need to make another motion to move it to a different date.
Can we get a motion to...
And maybe get some input from the applicant, too, as to...
So I did advertise it for...
Yeah.
...March 19th, so I just re-advertise it.
Yeah.
I believe the applicant is asking for a continuance to the second meeting in April, and that should give us enough time to re-advertise with the right dates and for him, for staff and the applicant to work on the revised master plan.
What's the date for the second meeting in April?
April 16th.
That sounds right, 16th.
I will be out of town. I will not be at this meeting in April.
16.
April 16th.
If a council member wouldn't be in attendance at that time, does that...
Yeah, I'm not in town on that date. I've already put in I'm missing that meeting a while ago.
The matter can still go forward on that date.
Yes, it can, yep.
But if for some reason either the applicant or a city does not want to have this issue heard without a full bank of council, then you can take that into consideration and pick a different date.
It's up to the applicant, I think.
If I may, Vice Mayor?
Yes, please.
We could take a date in, the first meeting in May, if we could have a full board, that 'd be, or council, that'd be great. And that'll give us another, because we are going to modify the plan and run the pro forma to see what we can, the maximum we can do.
May 7th.
Is the mayor here, then? Maybe he's not here now.
Mayor's here.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
To continue the, allow the applicant to continue to the May 7th meeting for the second reading.
Second. I have a motion, and I have a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes. What about the first two items we just approved? Are they still on for the second meeting in March?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll leave that at the discretion of council. I'm happy to come and appear for those items. I think that those items have a more clear record, so that's at your discretion.
And they've already been advertised for them.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion and a second, no more discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry.
So you're keeping the 19th for the first two, and then just moving, so A, E is the only one moving, but A, C, and D are second meetings on 19th still.
Correct. The next item we have is council business, so carryover council business. None?
No.
Okay.
I have the board report.
Okay, next, new business and board reports. Councilmember Fernandez?
Looking for, I just wanted to announce that the cultural asset committee for Hillsborough County has changed their deadline. They changed the, they changed the process a little bit and went back in front of county commission to get the grants funded. And so if somebody has a cultural, artistic, community event that, I encourage anyone in the city to apply for the grant, go on the Hillsborough County website. It can't be a fundraiser, but an event designed to bring the community together, focusing on art and history and culture, there are grants that will be available, and that window of application is opening very soon.
Thank you. Any other carryover council business? Councilmember?
Board report. It's on the same thing, the Hillsborough County Arts Council, same thing. Their grant deadlines have been pushed later because of funding issues with the county commission. So artists out there, it'll be coming, but just not now.
Thank you, yes.
I don't have a board report, but I do have two pieces of information, two pieces, one's a question, one's information. City manager, the individual that was here earlier, I didn't catch his name, I didn't write it down, regarding the detached garage, the non-conforming garage, and maybe that's my question. Has he been, has he been advised to go to the Board of Adjustment?
Okay, so we met with Mr. Harris today.
Yeah.
And his property, like he said, is a legal non-conforming use. Okay, the Board of Adjustments gives variances to setbacks, to heights, to bulk standards, things like that. They don't give a variance to the answer no, because the code says you cannot do it. So what he's asking is that that section of the code be changed.
But, but by going through the, I remember my tenure in the Board of Adjustment, we could, we could kick it to council for review. He can't, but the Board of Adjustment could, I thought, if I remember correctly, for a few, for a potential change. I'm not, I'm just saying for us to mitigate the issue, or to adjudicate the issue.
The Board of Adjust, they can make such recommendations, but it doesn't have to come from them. I mean, if they keep running across a same problem that multiple property owners are having, that would be the logical thing to do, is to say, council should probably look at this. But he's the only one that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And so, but it doesn't stop you from considering a change in the ordinance, and that would be something that would come up with probably the land development regulations that are being worked on now and that you've heard some of so far.
Okay. My second, and I know you want to talk about that, but the second comment about, there was discussion made earlier regarding traffic, truck traffic, coming out of Amazon and so forth. There'll be a presentation made sometime in April or May by the TPO to our council. And one of the items that's going to come up is that they're going to, on their list of projects, is a entrance ramp to the interstate off of Harney, off in that area. So it'll, that's coming down the pipe. I don't know how quickly it's coming, but that's on the list to be done. So anyway, I just thought, just so council's aware of that.
Councilmember Chambers?
Right, back to the non-conforming. You said legal non-conforming? I don't really know what that could be, but...
It is a legal non-conforming use. So the, the previous owner, also named Mr. Harris, got a permit, I think like in '83, early '80s. The code was changed shortly after that, that said detached structures cannot be in the side yard of a house or of a property. They have to be in the rear. So his was permitted legally, then the rules changed, so that makes him a legal non-conforming.
So this would be nothing that would be changed with what we met last week on land development, changing that ordinance because it's in the side yard?
Correct. We've not, so we talked about ADUs, and we, one of the discussions in ADUs is do we want to allow them in the side yard, or would they be regulated to the back? Right now, they'd be regulated to the back. So the code could be written where you could allow ADUs in the side yard, or you could allow all accessory structures in the side yard. That's not what we've proposed at this point, though.
So because he wants to make some changes is why he's, would be denied the permit. I mean, we're not going to tell him to knock it down now.
That's correct. So he, so our code, and this is paraphrasing, says you cannot enlarge, you cannot expand, you cannot increase non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures. You can do general maintenance, like he could put a certain amount, say the roof needed to be repaired, provided that he didn't do enough improvements over 50% of the value of the structure. At that point, he'd have to conform to all new codes. So he can maintain that structure, and our code recognizes that and allows him to do that. But code says you can't expand it.
Yeah, most communities have that same thing. If you have something that's non-conforming, they don't want you to make something that's non-conforming bigger. So that's why.
Okay.
Okay, we good?
Yep.
All right. Next item is city manager's report. Mr. Bay.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. The, the report on the purchases between $35,000 and $50,000 for the months of January and February is included in your backup. There are five purchases that were made in basically three divisions. If you have any questions about those, I'm happy to answer them.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. City attorney's report?
I have nothing.
All right, well, this meeting is adjourned.